Thank you for attending today's city council meeting. Please take a moment to silence your mobile device. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, after the mayor invites public comment, proceed to the podium, state your name and address, and you will be given five minutes to speak. A timer can be viewed on the podium screen. You may speak one time per agenda item. Please refrain from clapping after other speakers. Thank you again for joining us today. Let's pause a moment for our television audience to join us.
Just want to double check, is the volume okay? Can everyone hear us? Okay, okay, good, good. Yes, just a little bit, okay.
I hear my mic still.
Yeah. And that budget increase for new, new digital equipment really, really went, went quick, huh? All right, so with that, we're going to call the meeting to order. We're going to ask for folks who are with us, if you are both willing and able to stand for the invocation delivered by Reverend Ben Staley of the Chapel Hill United Methodist Church, and also we will have the Pledge of Allegiance following that. So Reverend, thank you for being here.
Let's pray together. Lord, we pause this now to remember our council member Mike Hoseil, and that we pray that you'd be with him in ways that bring healing. We ask that you would heal him of his condition, and that he'll be feeling better today and in coming days, and then watch over his family as well, that it will not be passed through the family. And in this season, Lord, we pray that you'll watch over our city, and that you'll help us all to stay safe, especially as we enter into the season of flu and COVID. We pray that you give us all wisdom. We thank you for your goodness and grace. Thanks for the change of the seasons, and we're grateful that you are with us through every season. Please, Lord, give us wisdom to know that in each time of our lives, you've promised never to leave us nor forsake us, and we pray that this might be a great season for Wichita, that there might be peace and prosperity where there has been adversity and despair. We also pray that we might have more love and care for one another, that we might follow you closely and experience your healing and hope. We give you praise that we can trust you to give us the courage and the strength to follow in your way, and then give us wisdom to know whenever we might not be following your ways, especially lead our council members and those in leadership positions, and then bring help and hope to those who are needy today. We all need you, and we give you praise for your promised help in time of need. Guide us in this meeting, be here with us, and we'll praise you for it all in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which stands, one nation, united out, individual, liberty, and justice.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, Madam Clerk.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 5th, 2023.
Does every member had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion, then I'll make a motion to accept those minutes as presented. Is there a second? Motion is being seconded by Councilmember Blueba. Clerk will open and roll, members cast their vote. Have a receiving five yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Awards and proclamations. Proclamation, Wichita Eagle Day.
If you are here to receive the proclamation for Wichita Eagle Day, please make your way towards the front. Where's everybody else? Where's Diop?
I'm the one representing.
Okay, okay. All right. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas the Wichita Eagle, we're going to do that again, the Wichita Eagle was founded on April 12th, 1872 by Marshall M. Murdock, and whereas for decades, the Wichita Eagle was and still is the largest newspaper in Kansas supplying daily news around the state. And whereas, 825 East Douglas was the home for hundreds of employees at the Wichita Eagle. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim September 16th, 2023 as Wichita Eagle Day in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to join in and recognize this day as the Wichita Eagle Day, celebrating 151 years of delivering both local news and news from around the world to thousands of people every day. You could say something if you like.
Yeah, so on behalf of all of the current and past Wichita Eagle employees, we are thrilled to be able to celebrate Wichita Eagle Day. We feel that we have helped tell the story of the city for decades upon decades, and to bring that news to your fingertips that we can all share in events happening not just in Wichita, not just in Kansas, but around the world. So we are very proud of what we've brought to the City of Wichita and really have enjoyed the partnership and making sure that everyone stays informed each and every day.
Let the editors know. Yes, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Constitution Week.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for Constitution Week, please make your way towards the front. Would anyone like to receive the Constitution Week proclamation? All right, if not, I'm just going to. Is the American flag suit under? All right, well, we'll be quick with this one then. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to the rule of law. And whereas, September 17th, 2023 marks the 236th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it. And whereas, public law, 915, guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designated September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim September 17th through the 23rd, 2023, as Constitution Week in the City of Wichita, and encourage all citizens to reaffirm the ideals the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by valiantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian, through this guardian of our liberties. Madam Clerk.
Hispanic Heritage Month.
If you're here to receive the proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month, please make your way to the front. That's you, Lenny. Come on. Oh, she looks adorable. All right. Proclamation of the City of Wichita, Kansas, founded in 1870, whereas Congress has authorized a president to issue annually a proclamation designated September 15th through October 15th as National Hispanic Heritage Month, known in Spanish as Mesdila. How did I say it? Hispania. The observation initially began in 1867 as Hispanic Heritage Week and was expanded in 1988 to cover the month at which it is celebrated today. And whereas, the City of Wichita looks forward to celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month with the greater community to highlight the rich heritage, arts, histories, food, music, and traditions of all 26-plus Latin American nations. And whereas, Latinos are individuals that are descendants from Latin American countries and may speak a variety of different languages. Hispanics are individuals that speak Spanish and are descendants from Spanish-speaking countries. And whereas, the City of Wichita recognizes the significant contributions of all Hispanic city employees and numerous grassroots leaders and outreach groups that help increase cultural awareness, education, enrichment, and community engagement with our residents. It is through their support and community involvement that our city has continued to become more culturally diverse and a welcoming city for everyone. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Brandon Whipple, Mayor of the City of Wichita, Kansas, along with the Wichita City Council, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2023, as Hispanic Heritage Month. And with that, we've asked one of our community leaders to read the proclamation in Spanish, as many of you can guess, I do not read Spanish, so.
Proclamación de la Ciudad de Wichita, Kansas, fundada en 1870. Considerando que el Congreso ha autorizado al presidente a emitir anualmente esta proclamación designando del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre como el mes de la herencia hispana, conocido como en español el mes de la herencia hispana. La observación comenzó oficialmente en 1868 como semana de la herencia hispana y se amplió en 1988 para cubrir el mes en el que se celebra hoy. Considerando que la Ciudad de Wichita espera celebrar el mes de la herencia hispana con la comunidad en general para resaltar la rica herencia, arte, historia, comida, música, y tradiciones de más de 26 naciones latinoamericanas. Y considerando que los latinos son personas que han descendi, son descendientes de países latinoamericanos y hablan una variedad de lenguajes. Los hispanos son personas que hablan español y descendientes de países de habla hispana. Considerando que la Ciudad de Wichita reconoce la importancia de los, de las contribuciones de todos los empleados hispanos de la ciudad y de numerosos líderes comunitarios y grupos de extensión comunitaria que ayudan a aumentar la conciencia cultural, la educación, el enriquecimiento, y la participación comunitaria de nuestros residentes. Es a través de su apoyo y participación comunitaria que nuestra ciudad ha aumentado la diversidad cultural y es una ciudad acogedora para todos. Ahora, por lo tanto, se resuelve que Brandon Whipple, el alcalde de la Ciudad de Wichita, Kansas, junto con el Consejo Municipal de Wichita, por la presente proclama del 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre de 1923 como el mes de la herencia hispana.
Thank you. Thank you. How proud I am to, for, to receive this proclamation on behalf of Hispanic Latino people, along with all the Latino leaders standing here with me. Less than 60 years ago, Latinos did not have a fair opportunity to vote freely, and we now have not a day, not a week, but a whole month to celebrate the contributions and heritage of our, of this, to this great, this great country. My grandfather came from Mexico in the early 1940s, and he worked in the railroads. He lived in a boxcar. He later married, had a family, and worked in the grain mill that I have the honor to have my image on. He gained his citizenship. He took his privilege seriously to vote. He became supervisor in that same grain mill, just, just a little bit away from that grain mill I just mentioned. He worked hard until his retirement in a house that he purchased himself. He came with a dream, as many do today, as I stand here as an elected state official, a member of my city district advisory board, owner of a nonprofit, and founder of Wichita's largest Latino cultural festival. I am proud, I am a product of his dream. As these ladies, young ladies and gentlemen out in the audience are a product of their ancestors' dream, we are very proud to stand here and receive this, so is with great honor and appreciation that we receive this proclamation in honor of our families and all who come so that they may too realize their dream. We thank the City of Wichita and those that see the beauty in the tapestry of colors, cultures, and images that make our little corner of the world a special place. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items one through 14.
Does every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion on the consent agenda, then I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as it's presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Wow, seconded by, by Councilmember Johnson. Clerk will open and roll, members cast their vote. My understanding is Vice Mayor Hoheisel has joined us from his sickbed, and I will ask for a voice vote from Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
Aye.
I believe that was an aye. Have a received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Board of Bids and Contracts and Wichita Airport Authority Board of Bids and Contracts, dated September 11th, 2023.
Morning.
Morning, Mayor, City Council, Josh Lauber, Department of Finance. The Board of Bids of September 11th, 2023 are as follows. For engineering, we have Grifstein's Alley between Main and Water, recommended a PPJ construction in the amount of $91,255. We have water distribution system tied with sanitary sewer Casabella, second edition, Phase 8, for Noack Construction Company Incorporated, in the aggregate total of $210,438. We have the 2023 Outsource Pavement Preservation Program, CIP, localized street repair, Feroston Construction LLC, in the amount of $218,670. We have the 7,300 gross vehicle weight utility vans for Don Hatton Chevrolet Incorporated for an aggregate bid total of $164,130. We have the SCADA system maintenance, deferring this to September 18th. We have the two Dodge Chargers for Wichita Police Department for Alan Samuels of Hutchinson Incorporated in the amount of $78,380. We have the three in Vero Site Quick View 360 Manhole Inspection for Key Equipment and Supply Company in the amount of $64,661.25. For airport, we have the Airport 1523 South Ridge Road Electrical and Communication Service Extension, deferring this September 18th as well. And we have the portable radios from Motorola Incorporated in the amount of $54,255.32. This is how to become a vendor with the City of Wichita. These are open requests for proposals out on the street, and I would be happy to try to answer any questions and recommend approval of the bid boards as recommended.
Are there questions for staff? Councilmember Blueba.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, maybe this is for Bob. Bob, do we have 10 brand-new SUVs for fire that are setting over at a maintenance lot that are almost a year old and warranties are being used? Do you know anything about that?
Mayor.
First.
Councilmember Blueba, I do not. I can find out for you.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I've had a couple people bring that up to me. Thank you.
Further discussion? See none. If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action, receiving file the report, approve the contracts, and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. Clerk will open and roll, members cast their vote. Vice Mayor Hoheisel. How do you wish to vote?
Aye. Aye.
I only vote once, Vice Mayor. With seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Grant acceptance. The National Trust for Historic Preservation, conserving Black modernism.
Good morning and welcome, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. I do not have any poems today. So the item I have for you today is in regards to a grant acceptance from the National Trust of Historic Preservation, conserving Black modernism. This is in District One. A little bit of background. Conserving Black Modernism Grant Program is a grant that is a national grant to the National Trust of Historic Preservation. It's designed to empower and equip sponsors and funding for technical support to preserve material heritage, innovation, and legacy of modern architectural sites designed by Black architects. McAfee Pool, which was constructed in 1969, designed by architect Charles F. McAfee, is a notable example of the modernism architecture by Black architects. On December 16th, 2022, the City of Wichita submitted a letter of intent to apply for the grant. This was a collaborative effort by the Metropolitan Planning Department, Public Works, and the Parks and Recreation Department. Planning provided invaluable expertise and content for the application regarding the ongoing historic preservation efforts within, with our area partners. On March 9th, the NTFHS, I mean, eight, eight, NTFHP, accepted the letter of intent and invited the city to formally apply. On April 4th of 2023, the city council approved the application. On June 12th of 2023, the NF, NTFHP notified the city that it was selected and the grant was as a recipient of the grant. So in analysis, the funding from the Conservative Black Modernism Grant will assist the City of Wichita to undertake project to accomplish the following: a full-scale preservation plan of McAfee Pool, primarily the, the, the bathhouse, ADA accessibility, repairing the windows and doors from vandalism incidents in July of 2022, and other indirect expenses. Financial and legal considerations, the total project funding will be $150,000 from the National Trust of Historic Preservation, and the grant does not require any matching funds. The Law Department has reviewed and approved the grant agreed to as form. The recommended actions is recommended that the city council accept the conserving, conserving Black Modernism grant and authorize the necessary signatures. Available for any questions?
Questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. Is there further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, then I will recognize Councilmember Johnson as this item resides in District One.
Thanks, Mayor. First, I want to thank staff and the team for all the work they did to get this grant and continuing to improve McAfee Pool and recognize the great work that Charles F. McAfee has done in the City of Wichita. With that, I would move that the city council accept the conserving Black Modernism grant and authorize the necessary signatures.
I'll second that motion. Motion is made and seconded. Clerk will open and roll, members cast their vote. Vice Mayor Hoheisel requests that you voice your vote.
Aye.
Have a received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Designation of Common Consumption Area Authorizing Possession and Consumption of Alcoholic Liquor, Publicary, and Resolution.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Mayor and Council, Troy Houghtman, Director of Parks and Recreation. So the item I have for you is in regards to a designation of a common consumption area with an event that's coming up this weekend. The designation of common consumption area. A little bit of background, in 2017, Kansas Legislature authorized cities to establish one or more CCAs, common consumption areas, by ordinance or resolution. Designate the boundaries of the CCA and prescribe the times during which alcohol liquor may be consumed. In January of 18, in January 18, the city council adopted an ordinance creating Chapter 4.08 of the Code of the City of Wichita, which allows the establishment of the CCAs within the city by resolution. Old Town Association has requested a CCA for the Latin Fest ICT Community Event scheduled for September 16th. It is Hispanic Heritage Month, and the CCA would be located in the Old Town area, and the area in red signifies the areas of the common consumption.
So City Hall is not on that map?
No, City Hall is not in this, in this map.
Thank you.
The recommendation is to adopt a resolution authorizing the designation of a CCA or common consumption area and allowing the consumption of alcohol liquor on property not otherwise subject to a license issued pursuant of the Kansas Liquor Control Act of the Club Drinking Establishment Act. And I'm available for any questions.
Are there questions for staff? Councilmember Fry.
Thank you, Mayor. Troy, this just seems kind of late in the process. Is this normal? I mean, if this was denied for any reason, there would not be a recourse for them to come back with this being Saturday.
I, I agree. I think we are behind on several of our I agree. I think we are behind on several of our permits and applications. And I can't tell you exactly where the holdup was at, but you are correct. I think this is a little bit late, and our endeavors in the future is definitely get this out here a little bit sooner.
Do we have it in the policy anywhere that says they have to have an application in by a certain date?
I do believe.
Maybe that's something we should look at.
I do believe we do have that. That's part of the deadline of the permit process. So again, I'm not exactly sure where the hang-up is at, but that's something that we want to endeavor to improve.
Do we have any other pending ones coming before us?
No.
Further questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, the chair recognizes Councilmember Ballard as this item resides in District Six.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take the staff's recommended action, close a public hearing, and adopt the resolution authorizing the designation of the common consumption area and allowing the consumption of alcoholic liquor on the date at the location during the time set forth therein and authorize the necessary signatures.
I'll second that motion. Motion is made and then seconded. Clerk open and roll members cast their vote. We'd ask Vice Mayor Hoheisel to voice his vote.
Aye.
Have a received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Downtown restroom and hydration station improvements.
Good morning and welcome, sir.
Hello. Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Tim Callums, Public Works and Utilities. So a little bit of background. On December 6th, 2022, city council approved the sale for of 14,496 square feet of A. Price Woodard Junior Memorial Park. That's was adjacent to the Hyatt Regency Hotel at 400 West Waterman. Proceeds for the sale were required to go to the park. Restrooms at A. Price Woodard Junior Memorial Park have been closed for years. Nascar Park is one of the most programmed parks that we have, is visited by downtown, by people in downtown Wichita on a daily basis. You can drive by just about any time and see people using the park, and is used for a lot of unique marquee events, one of those being Open Streets, which will be happening this Sunday. And so you can see here through January through July, over around 30 events managed by park rec staff, almost 400,000 attendees, and imagine that will significantly increase with Open Streets this this weekend. And currently, there are no restrooms in that park. Drinking fountains are sparse downtown Wichita. Hydration stations provide an opportunity for the public to stay hydrated during during summer events, having been through recent summer. Here, we all know that it gets very hot out there, and staying hydrated is very important for for individuals. So with the analysis, new, modern, durable restrooms, these are not kind of your, the older restrooms that you've seen in the past. These are newer restrooms that have new technology that can help withstand high use, especially in downtown environments. You can see here that they actually arrive on trailers and come in and they pretty much plop down. You need to get utilities to them and everything, but they are portable and easily used. If need be, they can be relocated if necessary. Very durable, and we feel that this is a very good option for us to look at. The hydration stations, you'll see up there in the upper right-hand corner, has a bottle filler and has an ADA accessible drinking bowl there. And again, I think we think one thing that's really neat about using these, that's a little bit different than some of the ones we've used in the past, is the water filling stations. A number of people carry around bottles and things like that all the time, and it's pretty easy to utilize and makes it a lot safer health-wise instead of just having a bunch of bowls everywhere. So for the analysis, restroom will be provided at A. Price Woodard Junior Memorial Park and at Nascar Park. Hydration stations will be installed at Nascar Park and then Old Town Square, which is right near the Old Warren. There's a lot of use down there. We feel that that's a great location for a hydration station. We have two other, the funding allows for two other hydration stations in downtown Wichita. Those are yet to be determined. One of the things that we want to do is kind of see how the public reacts to these and then be able to identify gaps or errors that we can utilize these a little bit successful instead of just popping them in. We kind of want to see how the public reacts to them, and we can figure out good locations. So any remaining funds will be used to make updates to any existing downtown restrooms or any other drinking fountains. There are, I think, one at Veterans Memorial Park. So there are a couple of them downtown that could be used if funding remains. So our financial considerations, the adopted 2024-2033 CIP includes $435,000 for park restroom and hydration stations, and those are geo-funded. Funding of the, for the sale of the land, which was about, which was $195,310, would be added to that for a total budget of $630,310, and staff recommends initiating the full amount at this time. Law department has reviewed and approved the body resolution as to form, and has recommended that the city council approve the budget, adopt the body resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures. Happy to stand for any questions?
Questions for staff? Councilmember Fry.
Thank you. I'd appreciate the presentation, Tim. Do you have possible locations for these restrooms within the parks right now? Do you?
Yes. Yeah, we have a couple ideas on where we'd like to put them. Nascar's a bit tricky, so one of the main things that we're trying to do is locate them near utilities to reduce that cost, because it will cost to get utilities there. But we do have some ideas in mind. At Nascar, we'd be looking at taking off a small little piece of the dog run area. Feel like that's a great location because it's a little bit easier to get to. We don't have to disturb a lot of the turf that we already just put in, a new turf in, so it makes it a good location, we feel. At A. Price Woodard, it'd be closer to Douglas. There are utilities that run pretty much in between A. Price Woodard and Century Two, and we feel that there, that's a good location for that. Visible from the street, easy for people to come off the trail along the east bank and be able to come up and use the restroom and come back down.
Did Nascar Park master plan ever envision or recommend restrooms as part of its design? I don't remember that being the case.
I don't believe so. I think that restrooms have previous designs and things for restrooms that kind of, that have utilized in the past haven't been as successful as maybe we have hoped. We feel that this design is a big improvement to those compared to standard CMU block and things like that. This is a little bit different. Higher technology allows for one user, doesn't create some of the concerns that we've had in previous restrooms.
And the utilities will be water and sewer. Will there be electricity to these as well?
There can be use for them. I believe there is an option for some solar that can be used to it, but the main ones that are going to be required are going to be the sewer and water.
Okay. What about the maintenance and the cleaning schedule? I know with the former Old Town restrooms across from the Old Heroes, we had to close those because we couldn't keep up with the maintenance and criminal activity in that. What's our maintenance schedule going to be for these?
I believe it's roughly once a day. I believe that's the Public Works and Utilities come and take care of that and clean that. One of the benefits with this design is that you can pretty much just take a hose in there and water it down. Where previous ones, they were a little more standards, a little bit harder to clean everything. This is a much easier and quicker time to clean these. It's a little bit more apparent, too, because it's pretty open inside. You can kind of see where everything is. We don't imagine it'll take very much time to clean these. It's one stall, so it's a little bit easier.
And it's Public Works that will have their responsibility?
I believe so, yes.
And once a day?
Yes.
I've read numerous articles about these Portland Lou's across the country and how even some cities have had to have attendants standing by 24 hours a day just to make sure that they are kept clean. If we get to this point, is this going to ramp up the cleaning budget on this tremendously?
I don't I don't envision that. I think the goal of this is to serve everyday users. I do believe that during large events, other portable restrooms can be used, but I think the goal of this is to establish the day-to-day users that do use the park rather than large events such as Open Streets and things along those lines.
With Nascar Park having a CID with money dedicated to maintenance, will we be able to use any of that money for the maintenance of Nascar Park cleaning? Or is that all allocated and used for something else?
Yes, that is a possibility, but what we're looking at is in regards to Public Works right now has a contract for cleaning the restrooms across all of our parks. So Public Works monitors a contract that we currently use right now. Riverside is a good example. We have a restroom there that there's a cleaning crew that is contracted that comes out and cleans that during the summer, spring, summer, and fall months. So we would just add that to their contract with Public Works supervising that particular contract.
I just have grave concerns that we're not going to be able to keep up with this maintenance and cleaning. I mean, we've seen this in Old Town with the former facility that we had closed for years. And yes, I understand this unique design and how it is a simpler hose-out, but I'm just really worried this cost is going to really exceed expectations.
Well, we do have other restrooms throughout our park system that is currently open and is used, and we have a process of cleaning those, and this will be added into that. I think we have concerns for that as well, but I think we have really researched this design and kind of looked at how it's going to impact cleaning and operations, and I think it's definitely a great option for us to explore.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, Troy. I just have a few more questions, if that's okay. I was also going to ask about the cleaning. I tried to also go and do a little bit of research and look these up and make sure that I understand. This is a new concept to me, but I was going to ask about the cleaning. But then also, are there sinks included?
So there's different models, and I think the model that we're looking at is that the sink is actually on the outside. So if you don't want to, if you're not using the restroom, you can actually wash your hands without actually going in. It's actually a sink that's on the outside. I think that's the model that we're looking at.
And then there's soap and paper towels provided?
Definitely soap and probably not paper towels, so.
Okay. I was just also concerned about supplies and making sure that, you know, people don't go in and take it, and then people have expectations of what's in there, and then it's not. Okay. And I think I saw in the visual, but just also wanted to make sure, are these ADA compliant? I saw that the hydration stations were for sure, but are, okay. I saw the sticker. I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that was one of the things that was really important to us, and these folks have designed this and for 25 years plus, and I think they've thought of just about everything, and that includes ADA accessibility.
And then just one last question, and this is very logistical, and I'm sorry to get in the weeds, but my mind was just thinking. So will there be any kind of signage inside that if somebody accidentally gets locked in or they, you know, go in and, you know, they see that it needs maintenance issues or service, will there be some sort of signage of this is who you call, and then who will that be?
So we'll probably have something that's a sticker that kind of for maintenance or addressing any kind of concerns, please call certain number, and that could definitely be something from Public Works or from the Parks and Recreation Department where we can reach out to the contractor to come out there and address any kind of issues or concerns.
Your cellphone? Just kidding. Thank you.
Councilmember Blueba.
Thank you, Mayor. The current facility we have over by the Old Heroes, what are we doing with that facility?
I couldn't tell you. I'm not familiar with with that location.
Do we have any history as to what was going on there, why we stopped utilizing those? I'm just trying to go back to past lessons. If we had issues there and.
Some of the lessons, Mayor.
Of course.
Councilmember, some of the lessons that we learned were primarily the building being used for shelter, and then also an inability to keep it clean on the kind of schedule that we needed to, and the difficulty of cleaning a traditional restroom of that nature. We think that the Portland Lou addresses all of those issues. As you can see, it's visible from the top and the bottom, so it discourages any kind of inappropriate activity and even sleeping in the facility, which again was the problem in Old Town, the primary problem in Old Town that wound up making us close the facility. We, it's my understanding that we do open the restrooms in Old Town at times, and I think, again, I'm probably going to be corrected by staff. I thought we opened it during the farmer's market period time on Saturdays, but it's not open on a 24/7 basis.
Did we have any criminal activity?
That, Councilmember, I don't remember.
And also, how does this coincide with, we still haven't decided anything on the riverfront, legacy program? I understand we got the allocation from the sale of the property utilized for A. Price Woodard Park. Is this really what we envisioned utilizing the money for?
Well, I think that's up to the council to talk about in terms of, there was no purpose identified when the council designated the funding for that park. And so we brought this forward because it has been a longtime need in that park and if we're, and along the river as well. And the beauty of this model is that it can be relocated. So if there is a development along the riverfront that requires the relocation of restrooms, then this facility can either be put someplace else on site or can be moved to another site.
I mean, I know we have a lot of issues of defecation in Old Town and the area, and you know, I don't know how we track that or anything, but I don't know if this is one of the major areas or not. I haven't heard of this area as much as I have heard a lot more around businesses.
Thanks. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Bob, your answer, and maybe it's Troy, I'm not sure, but your answer sparked another question, where you said that, you know, because of the bottom area of this is is visible, that it would preclude people from going in and sleeping. And I'm not necessarily sure that it would. I mean, if, you know, it's raining or snowing, we might have someone who's homeless, you know, seeking shelter or someone intoxicated go in there. So let's say that somebody did go in there and lock the door and kind of take up residence in there. What happens? Like, is there, again, who gets called? How would the resident, how would the community know who to call? Is it the police? Do they have keys? I know I'm really getting into the weeds, but that was something that I was thinking about when you mentioned that it would keep homelessness from homeless folks from going in there. I'm not sure it would, but just what, is there a plan? How do other communities deal with that? Thank you.
I think staff can supplement what I say, but it's my understanding that this design has progressed over time in Portland, where homelessness is a significant issue, and they felt that this is the most successful way of keeping the folks from sleeping in it. And of course, like any homeless issue downtown, the homeless outreach team is the primary resource that we have in order to be able to address or work with people who would be possibly sleeping in the facility.
Further questions for staff? I do have one. It's a budget question. And I think that either Councilmember Fry or Councilmember Blueba alluded to it. Forgive me if I got that wrong, but my understanding is we actually have quite a budget to clean up human waste throughout downtown. And I'm wondering if by adding these bathrooms, if we're going to hopefully see a decrease in the need for that budget. I think someone mentioned, well, it's really not measurable. But if we're seeing less of a need for those who contract out to, because, you know, basically, if you have to use the restroom and you don't have access to a restroom, you know, sometimes people get creative and they will use a public space instead. So is there reason to believe that if more people are utilizing a restroom like this, then that could actually alleviate some of the budget that we have currently for folks who are taking, let's say, alternative ways to address their discomfort?
I think that's an aspiration and something that we'd be looking for. My staff is actually very active throughout the downtown area, cleaning human waste, and it's one of the issues that is really a difficult situation. We're asking staff to do something that is really not a pleasant task, and anything that would help us alleviate that would be great. I don't think it's going to stop it or change it, especially with just only two locations. But I think if we coordinate something with. But I think if we coordinate something with some of the homeless shelters and kind of really kind of look at it from a bigger perspective of having resources where they can use the restroom, I think that's part of the answer. So I think once these get installed, or if they get installed, we work with some of the homeless shelters and kind of work on kind of addressing the situation from a much larger perspective.
Thank you. So we'll hope up to comments from the public. Is there any input on this item?
My name's Doug Ballard. I live in Riverside, District 6. In the mid, early 90s, we had an antique shop downtown, and I met with the head of the park department back then, and I told him, you're trying to do all this stuff downtown, and you can't depend on the old mill to provide a bathroom for everybody that comes downtown. So this is something that's just been neglected for a long time. This is really simple stuff. And for years, not too far from our house, we, there was a group of us, several groups of us independently met at Park Villa, and I ran every morning from like 1987 to 1993. There was a city employee that showed up at Park Villa, opened up the bathroom, went in there and checked the thing out, and he left. And he came back at 10 o'clock, or somebody came back at 10 o'clock in the same blue Ford pickup. This is not that big a deal. You just have to do it. And when you, when the guy would come back and lock the door, if there was somebody in there, he had to leave. So bathroom takes a little bit of maintenance. You can't just leave them there. It's just pretty simple stuff. There's, used to be another bathroom over in Central Riverside Park. The same guy opened it up. It's, it's not that big a deal. Should have been done a long time ago, a long time ago. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Further input from the public? All right. So now we're bringing discussion back to the bench. Further discussion. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. For this proposal, first, I think the bathroom at Nafsker Park probably is a, is a good idea, but to Councilmember Frye's point, we definitely need to find some way to monitor that. And I only say that because when we were shooting our park and rec video to try to get the gold star, there was a gentleman who went into the porta potty out there attempting to, I think Huff, started a fire. Fire department had to come out, and we were there watching. So I would like if we found a way to monitor Nafsker Park, but to Tim's presentation of trying this out, I think we should. When it comes to A Price Woodard, though, that funding was not dedicated for restrooms. The goal, when we met with the Hyatt folks, when the district one park board member was really enhancements that were not a restroom, it was beautification, it was trees, it was really a bust of A Price Woodard, our first African-American mayor, that we wanted to see there. So we would be taking funds that were, at least in that conversation, dedicated to that and using a temporary restroom. I also don't believe that the citizens of Wichita are going to allow the riverfront to stay how it is. I think that that really will happen at some point, no matter what the design will be. And if we would delay the A Price Woodard restroom, the hydration station's fine, but the restroom, which is the most expensive piece of that, I think we should wait until more planning is done on the riverfront before just finding a location to put that bathroom down. Again, Nafsker Park is fine. I have heard a lot of concerns about these, but it sounds like that's been thought out in the technology with the restroom. I'm willing to go along with that, but I really don't want to see the funding for Price Woodard used to fund this specific bathroom. And I think we should maybe defer that one out a few years or whenever that gets put into the CIP so we can keep those funds for the beautification aspect. And still, I'd love to see a bust of Price Woodard in that park.
Thank you, Mayor. Ever since I got on the council almost two years ago, public bathrooms and hydration stations have been really important to me. And if I'm being honest, I'm a little frustrated that all the comments have been hypothetical, what if? I get emails all day of, you know, people going to the bathroom downtown and people, you know, destroying things and all of that, but what about everybody else? We're talking about a small population that does do some damage, but the fact that we had a park designed, Nafsker Park, and that we had it designed to where we have a place for animals, which I love animals, to go to the bathroom and not people. I know that was done by design, but we encourage people to come downtown, and we lean on our businesses to bear the weight of going to the bathroom. And everybody should have accessible water, no matter what, no matter how much money you make, no matter what your job is, doesn't matter, and everybody has to go to the bathroom. I don't know how many of you are parents in here, but as soon as I get to the park with my son, in about five minutes, he has to go to the bathroom. I hear complaints about people urinating in public, you know, even going number two in public. It's not something that we want to see. So doing nothing, which is what we're doing now, is not working, and it's not an option. I think it's incredibly important to try something new that's working in other communities. Is it a learning curve to try something different? Absolutely. We do have a bathroom downtown that had a lot of problems, and, you know, I know that there was vandalism. I don't know the specifics of it, but I know that it's closed and that it has a wrought iron gate around it, obviously for a reason. It wasn't for the aesthetics in the beginning. So I know that there's a lot of questions about it. I just think that this is an incredibly important item that we need to take really serious. And Councilmember Johnson, I appreciate your and my other colleagues' comments on being concerned about the funding. Maybe there's a different option that we could look at. I know that these bathrooms could be relocated. I don't want to wait three years to see what happens with the river. I don't think that's fair to our community, to the public. You know, there's lots of people that ride their bikes, you know, on the path or run or whatever, and there's literally zero options. We lean on QuickTrip, Jump Start, all of our businesses for people to just come in and use the restroom. I used to own Riverside Park for about five years, and everybody that played frisbee golf would always come to the coffee shop. And at the time, it was a little annoying to me because there was only two bathrooms, and it was a pretty small space, but now I get it. This is the city's responsibility to offer a bathroom, a public bathroom for people, and I think this is one of the best options. So that's just my two cents.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, and I appreciate the discussion we're having because it's a lot of concerns I'm hearing about maintenance and upkeep. I remember the Nafsker Park discussion several years ago when we were planning that, and there was a lot of discussion about putting in bathrooms at that park. It was decided against it because the fear was the city was not going to be able to afford the upkeep. And we've seen that with the Old Town bathroom, and you're seeing it along the river and underneath our bridges. It's very difficult, and our cleanup budget has tripled, I believe, over the last year, I believe. So I'm supportive of where I believe Councilmember Johnson was heading with a motion to maybe just delay the A Price Woodard Park bathroom facility because of a couple of concerns. One, he's absolutely correct. The money from the sale of the land near the Hyatt was intended to improve the park aesthetics and some of the vandalism and some of the other issues that had been caused there. Bathrooms were not part of that discussion. And secondarily, I think the long-term vision for what our riverfront needs to be and what it will have amenity-wise, I hate to, you know, put something in and replace it in a year or two or move it. I think we need to have that discussion that has been delayed for too long. We need to get back on track with the riverfront master plan and get something designed. Finally, Nafsker Park, with the funding mechanism of the CID, has the ability to help offset those maintenance costs. So I'd like to see us do one project and see that test case, see how it works, see if we can maintain that schedule before we start going into two, three, four, five bathrooms.
So. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I would like to echo the comments of Councilmember Frye. I was going to say some of the same. I also want to applaud Councilmember Ballard. Thank you for bringing us. And the questions that I have are not in terms of judgment or trying to derail the project. It's just trying to hopefully make it more successful. I would be certainly supportive of Nafsker Park. I think that's a great place to start and maybe do the first one as a pilot so that that way we know more about maintenance, we know about safety and security, the burden and cost on the staff and for the city, and then also future placement. It sounds like Councilmember Johnson brought a good point up. So I will be supportive of Nafsker Park, kind of wait to see where the rest of this, it sounds like some other discussion happening over here, but thank you for bringing this to us, Councilmember Ballard.
All right. Further discussion. If none, I make a motion, and I know it's District 1 and 6, to approve the budget's adopt a bonding resolution, authorize necessary signatures with an amendment that the money that would have come out of the Hyatt funds for Woodard Park is kept whole and that money instead taken out of the funds that we put aside to use on a pickleball palace. Is there a second? Means that we're keeping whole the money for AP Woodard Park for the art so that the fear that the, that money wasn't meant to be used for a bathroom isn't, we can alleviate that fear. And since the pickleball palace has been put on hold for now, as we do seek further information, I'm going to take the money out of that and make sure that we can get restrooms for kids and for folks who need restrooms downtown, which should alleviate, I think, a lot of the concern here about where the money's coming from to put a bathroom down by the river. And we got about $3 million sitting in our general fund, about $3 million or CIP, $6 million for this project. The cost doubled because of inflation. Hopefully, if we put it off just a little bit, take a little bit out to get this project going, hopefully that inflation comes down. If not, we'll make it work. So right now, the vote is for both bathrooms. However, we are keeping whole the money for the park, because that seems like that's the concern, and we're going to take that money out of the pickleball, and we're going to put that instead into this pressing need. Is there a second?
Second for a discussion.
Councilmember Boobah.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think it's the pickleball palace. I think that's something the media's jumped on, but my DAB approved it last night. I think all we were doing was just, we moved it a hundred and some feet, so I don't know that it's on hold or being canceled or anything like that, so I think you're going a little bit too far with that, Mayor. Troy, would you like to clarify that?
So in regards to the pickleball complex, this past Monday, yesterday, we had actually had two meetings, one with the park board as well as with the DAB, identifying a new location in the park, but continuing to move forward with the project. In regards to the concerns about the pickleball operation, we wanted to do a sound study. That sound study told us that we had some issues that we needed to deal with, and so to alleviate any kind of ordinance restrictions from our part, we moved it from the north part of the park over at South Lakes down to the south part. We looked at the study, we looked at the design without major impacts to the design, and we're continuing to move forward with the project, looking to bid in October. So we're moving forward with it, just a different location within the park.
Okay. And aren't we utilizing ARPA funds for?
That has been discussed. I don't know that for sure, but that is something that I think our finance staff and city managers have talked about, but that could be an option.
I guess I'm just trying to understand the mechanics of the motion, how we can just float money around bucket to bucket.
Easily. Can someone explain that comment for ARPA funds? Because if we're actually able to possibly use ARPA funds for the pickle complex, then that means we have money that was designated for the pickle complex through our general budget that no longer will need to be there, and therefore my motion is actually, would appease, be appeased to all complaints, it sounds like.
Mayor, we have not brought a proposal to the council yet on the projects to be finalized under ARPA. We have talked about the pickle complex being funded through ARPA because it is something that can be done. The dollars can be committed. We can be assured that we'll meet the federal deadlines, but we have not asked the council to approve that yet.
So it could be, and if the council wanted to, then the council could actually approve one-time ARPA funds for the pickle complex, and therefore the money that we set aside already for the pickle complex would be free for a project like this.
Again, we haven't run all the traps to make sure that it's eligible. We believe that it is, but until I get our consultant agreeing to all the projects, I'm a little hesitant to say yes. We'll use all of $6 million of ARPA for the pickle complex.
Okay, but we have reason we believe that this might qualify for that.
We do.
Okay. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. I would like to make a substitute motion that the city council approve the budget for the two hydration stations and the restroom facility in Nafsker Park, adopt the bonding resolution, and authorize the necessary signatures.
Second.
Which is the main second is speak to the motion. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. This actually does float the same comment I was going to make, because Troy answered my question. Because of this delay, I was going to offer a friendly amendment to you if it was not the pickle complex, because I talked about last night, if we identified another funding source for it, that we would be okay. I don't know if that friendly amendment now would go to you since we seconded it, but it would identify another funding source in the CIP or general fund, whenever staff could find that.
So I would amend my, I would amend my original motion to allow not just it designated to the pickleplex, but designated to a different funding source so that we can keep AP Woodard budget whole. So it could be, and it sounds like from the discussion, there's other mechanisms at play, so that might actually be a better motion. And if the second or the motion agrees with the amendment of my motion, which, Councilmember, I believe it's you, then we will have, my original motion would be amended with your, with your suggestion. We will still have this substitute motion on the table, but if the substitute motion fails, the original motion could be up for a vote. Is that, is everyone clear on that?
No.
So yes.
I need a whiteboard.
I'm okay with the amendment, so.
All right. So the underlying motion is to find an alternative source for the second bathroom that's in the park that's not utilizing the Hyatt Park money for. So we're just asking staff to find us an alternative funding for that. The substitute motion, and Councilmember, correct me if I'm wrong, the substitute motion is to move forward with everything as is, but without the bathroom, just the hydration station in the park.
Without the bathroom at A Price Woodard.
Yes. And, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I think, just, I want clarification. Councilmember Frye talked about two hydration stations. There's actually four.
Okay. I'm sorry. You're right. I apologize.
Okay.
So that should have said four hydration stations.
Thank you.
So we still got discussion on the motions. The underlying motion was amended, which means the substitute motion fails, we're back on the original as amended motion, which is to move forward the project with a different funding source to alleviate the concerns about the funding source coming out of AP Woodard Park's current budget, which also has beautification and other historical aspects to it. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure I'm completely aware of what's happening. And then also, maybe a question to Councilmember Ballard, but what I understand and what I seconded was for the four hydration stations, four instead of two, and then for the bathroom, the restroom station at Nafsker Park, and then pausing on A Price Woodard, not that we wouldn't do it, but just to look for a funding source. And I like that. I think it's a little cleaner than saying, we'll just find the money. I would like to know what source of money we identify and then bring it back to council. So that's why I seconded it. I'm not opposed to it in A Price Woodard Park. I just don't know where the money's going to come from, so I want to make that point clear. But am I correct, Jennifer, in my analysis of what currently will be voted on next? But am I correct, Jennifer, in my analysis of what currently will be voted on next?
My understanding, that's the substitute motion that's been seconded, and that's before the council this time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. Bob, do we have another funding source so that we can complete this today? I don't want it to get lost. It's already taken almost two years.
Right. So after I received correspondence from Councilmember Johnson, we did a quick review of the CIP. You basically would be sacrificing maintenance dollars out of our park maintenance capital project, which I think is about $0.5 million. So you would take about $200,000 out of that. The other alternative is to move forward as originally recommended and then direct staff to include in next year's CIP the $200,000 for improvements to A Price Woodard. That's, that is a cleaner way, because then you've incorporated it into the CIP, you're on record directing us to do that, and we're not trying, again, at the last minute, trying to shuffle projects in order to fund it. If that's the direction you go, assuming that the motion, the substitute motion doesn't, isn't approved. But that would be, that way you would know that you're funding this project. But I, we can talk more about that if that motion is, you know, what's going to be considered.
Sorry, just kidding. I guess I would just be curious how my colleagues feel about, I like the idea of next year in the CIP, funding the beautification project or whatever you'd like to do in Price A Price Woodard Park, so that we can keep the project whole.
And let's, and just to follow up, because we've got a couple more people on the board for the discussion about the amendment or the substitute amendment. If the substitute amendment fails, I think that the majority of the council at this moment, or at least half the council is interested in finding a way to get both, to get a bathroom and also get the plans and the ideas for Woodard Park still moving without delay. So if we have to discuss that mechanism, we need the substitute motion first to fail, and then it gets back in the original motion, and I'm happy to reamend my original motion to make it clean. But the goal, I think, is to make sure that we are threading the needle, that we don't have to sacrifice a bathroom for a historical preservation of the history of Woodard Park. We can have both, and I think that's what we're talking about now, is how do we move forward for that? And I think that staff, you know, jumping in and saying, hey, we also have this option, is great, because it shows that we have multiple avenues to get to our shared goal. So with that, Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Just to speak to my motion, again, my concern isn't with the funding source for this, because I believe it is a need and something that we need to address long term. When we talk about waiting two years for this, we've been waiting on a riverfront legacy plan for decades, and I think that needs to be addressed as a priority, because it is our jewel, and we need to figure out how this is going to fit with everything else that is envisioned down there. I like the idea of starting with one project as a pilot in Napster Park, because it's a little easier to maintain, it's more visible, it's got a funding source potentially with the CID revenue that is generated by the Napster Park to help offset what will, I'm positive, is going to be incredible maintenance cost. Once a day is not going to cut it. So I'd like us to see one project, get our, get our feet underneath us, figure out how we're going to do this, so that way, when we do add additional stations, because again, I think this is a good project, a good product, and has the potential to be successful. But I've seen too many horror stories from other cities across the country. One city, I think I spoke to this, they had to put an attendant at it 24 hours a day just to maintain it, and I don't think we can afford that kind of cost. So let's figure out one project, pilot it at Napster, identify a potential funding source for A Price Woodard Park in the future as we develop the master plan for the river, because our community has waited decades for us to do something with the river. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Jennifer, Bob, I know a lot of this has been, been a lot of words that I think are similar. These motions sound similar to me now with Councilmember Frye's. I mean, he specified the four stations and the one bathroom, but in identifying another funding source, the mayor's amended motion, to me, essentially is the same thing, because we don't have the funding source identified and outside of project or park maintenance savings or that budget, we still would need to take some time to identify the funding source or put it in the CIP, which would delay it anyway a little bit. So am I wrong that these are kind of the same?
I think that's really for the, for the speakers and the makers of the motion to agree upon. I think you're getting close. I think it's more clear to vote on the substitute. If you want to amend the substitute again or clarify for the record, that might be helpful.
Just from a practical standpoint, if I can, Mayor.
Go ahead.
From, since I have to try to enforce or implement, I hear two very different motions. I have one that has a restroom in A Price, and I hear one that does not have one in A Price, so.
I would agree. That's what I hear as well.
And my goal, I'm sorry, my goal of my motion, if the Frye motion fails, then it goes back onto my motion, which would have two bathrooms, four hydration stations, and we would have more flexibility for the funding, which is like $200,000, I guess, which is, you know, frankly, we can find that. We have more flexibility while shielding the, the account that you were concerned with your, with your original concerns, that, hey, I don't want basically to rob this other incredible vision and project for Woodard Park if, it doesn't have to be one or the other. And I think that, that's my goal of my underlying motion. So if this motion fails, we're back on the bill, and we're back on my motion, which you and I have been working with, and we can, it will allow us an opportunity to wordsmith that a bit better, so that we can make sure that staff has proper direction. But at this moment, the substitute motion is in order. It is up for a vote. I will be voting no, and I encourage my colleagues to vote no, so that we can get back onto the original proposal and work our way through to getting the two bathrooms and four hydration stations instead of cutting off one of the bathrooms. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. So to both motions, now that I think I have some clarification. So my main concern going in today was protecting the funding source. I have long wanted to see more recognition of Price Woodard downtown beyond the name of a park, beyond flowers, and I think a bust does that. I think putting those trees in there and beautifying the space does that. I don't think much of that will happen outside of potentially a bust until we see some more robust discussion on the development of the riverfront. I am actually supportive of both motions. I do think that Price Woodard's restroom should wait. I know we can pick it up and move it. I think there will be some waste of funds when that happens, if it's within the next two or three years, that the public decides that we're at a point to move it, won't be that much, but still, if we're moving it, instead of designing a park around it, and I don't think we're going to design the riverfront around the restroom. But again, both of these motions kind of achieve what I would like to see, and that's protecting the funding source. I'm hopeful that we find a good location for a Price Woodard restroom. But again, I think as the public looks at developing the riverfront, twice now, we've talked about most, first time all, but the second time, most of the riverfront being on the table for some redesign. So on the Councilmember Frye's motion, again, I think that is a good one. I'm supportive of both. I will probably vote no on that to identify a different funding source, but I liked the wording that the manager had, so I'll have more comments on the next motion.
Excellent. And I'll just point out that Councilmember Frye's motion is to move forward the current plan as presented without the bathroom, and I believe that the current plan will still dip into the funds that you're concerned about for the hydration stations. No, it would, it's just the bathroom. Okay, just wanted to clear that up. So with that, clerk, open your members cast their vote. This for the substitute motion. Councilmember Hoheisel.
No.
Ever received or no votes, that motion does fail. We're back on the original emotion as amended, which is a motion that is open for discussion in case our faithful staff would like to help wordsmith this more, so that we can reach our goals of, of really preserving the fund for the park while also allowing the bathrooms and the hydration stations to move forward. It looks like legal has parliamentary inquiry or procedure, I'm sure, to correct us on.
I think there's general understanding what the underlying motion is, but for the purpose of the records, or for the, for the purpose of the minutes, it would be helpful if you would restate your motion now that we've had some discussion.
And I actually restated after I listened to Councilmember Johnson, because he's on, and I want to make sure we get this right. Heck, you can even stay the motion if you want, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, Jennifer was going to, Jennifer said what I was going to say, if we could restate it, but to Bob's comments, if I understand that to be a cleaner version of what the mayor said, am I right or wrong about that? So it would identify CIP dollars for this bathroom?
That's not quite what I said, but what I had said was that you would adopt the motion as outlined, and then have, as part of that motion, directing staff to include $200,000 in the 2025 CIP for beautification of A Price Woodard. Therefore, we'd be backfilling the dollars that are, from the Hyatt sale, we'd backfilling that in next year's CIP, so you'd be whole. And that way, that allows the project to move forward without trying to identify some funding source either today at the bench or us going back and robbing some project in order to accomplish this. And that gives us time then to plan in next year's CIP for the $200,000 beautification.
So that would essentially move forward as is with the hope that all of our financial projections are good, and we could backfill that instead of keeping the dedicated funds to the park now.
Well, I think if you gave us direction to include it in the CIP, that's, we would include it in the CIP.
Yeah, but still, little cause for concern, only because as the governing body, we, we can say yea or nay to that. So we may find ourselves in a position where we need to keep that instead of having it for the beautification aspect. What I thought I heard you say, and again, we've, we've had a really good conversation, but I thought I had heard you say was we would move forward with the recommendation that there are the two bathrooms and four hydration stations, and that the bathroom would be the project that was identified in the CIP, so the funding source would be there for it while staff continued to work out a location. So council would be directing the funding for that while keeping the funds from the sale whole right now.
Mayor, if that's the case, then the A Price Woodard bathroom would not be constructed until next year.
So I have an alternative.
Because we don't, I mean, if I put it in the CIP, I'd have to put it in next year's CIP, right, at the $200,000.
So that would then give us much of what I think I was hearing is a good year of pilot for Napster Park to see how that works out and allow us to probably find the best location for Price Woodard with any lessons learned from Napster Park.
If it votes, though, I mean, you run into the same problem that you just stated, that if you don't trust the CIP to backfill the money for next year, then also the same argument applies that we might not trust the CIP to fulfill the bathroom that is needed by the river. And therefore, I would like to ask staff, just for an alternative, what if we make the motion to take that $200,000 out of the reserve? We have a record reserve, we make over $800,000 a year on interest alone. So why don't we, I guess, pull it out of there? Everyone's whole, we can move forward with the plan as is, and there's no CIP vote. If the vote is there to transfer that $200,000 into Woodard Park immediately, and then we can move forward with the current plan while keeping the account over at Woodard whole.
Mayor, we typically haven't done that in the past. The council's policy has been to give up projects if they're going to fund a new project in the CIP, and we've usually reserved, after we're out of the budget process, we typically have only used reserves for emergency purposes, or again, next time we're out of the budget.
Bob, have you ever held the hand of a five-year-old who asks to go potty? All right, this is an emergency, so I think this qualifies, right?
Mayor, you know I have. The cleanest is to take $200,000 from the park improvement funding, and that would be, we have $550,000 in '23 and $550,000 in 2024, and you have moved those dollars around in the past for a priority project. So that, and that stays with the discipline of the CIP process that you've all enforced in the past.
So then I wonder, as we talk about the original motion, we could dress up the motion in which a funding source is identified, but identified within this budget year, and that could move us forward with the entirety of holding the Woodard account whole while also holding or allowing a project that Councilmember Ballard, along with many community groups have been working towards, that allows that to go forward as is.
Right. Mayor, if you take $200,000 out of the 2024 park improvement project, then we could go, it's the same math again, right? So next year, when you approve the CIP, we could possibly restore that $200,000 if funding is available. That's another, but that way, you've stayed true to your policy on having projects balance out.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. I echo Councilman Johnson's concerns about the integrity of the CIP process, when just today, we had a person on this bench try to rob a CIP project in another district to pay for this. So I question the ability to stay with a, with a high integrity in our CIP process when this is happening on the fly. I just have no confidence that that will be the case. I like the idea of putting CIP dollars towards the Napster Park, or the A Price Woodard Park project in '25, and that way, it does get funded, and we have that year of the pilot at Napster. I need to keep these separate. Maybe I should call them number one and number two.
So we're talking about $200,000. We're an $800 million year organization, and on the fly, there was a motion by a member whose name I don't recall to strip our budget of $12 million after months and months of discussion. So it's tough for me to take that advice seriously, given that this is the process. This is how we do, do this stuff. We do it out in the open, we don't do it behind closed doors. And so if we want to talk about valuing, I guess, budgets while also valuing the priorities of our, of our citizens who have asked for this, and the people who voted for the budget did so because they asked for this, then we can have it both ways, because we have been responsible in the last two years of budgeting, in which we have come in with a surplus every single year. We are not in a crisis. The discussion here is, do we want these four hydration stations and these two bathrooms in this modern design that's going to be, alleviate a lot of the issues that have already been stated, that were stated based on past designs, and also want to keep Woodard Park whole as far as making sure that it has the money that it was depending on, so that these art projects and the other historical projects continue? I think we could do both, and that's, and it sounds like what staff is saying is there's multiple paths so that we can do both. What staff isn't saying is we can't afford this, or the staff isn't saying that this isn't, you know, that this is going to, to, I guess, delay anything else. And so I've identified a project that right now, I think $200,000 out of the pickle complex would work. I was told you can't do that, we want the pickleball complex. Okay. Now we open up the concept to just identify $200,000 where we can do this, so we can hold both whole, and that's what we're talking about now, is making sure that we hold both the projects whole moving forward, and that is our option today, that is our opportunity. And if we do this right, again, we get to And if we do this right, again, we get to tell the residents who ask for bathrooms and hydration stations, tell them, yeah, we delivered on that, while also delivering on the AP Woodard Park improvements that honors the first African-American mayor of Wichita. We can do that if we just take our time and walk through the process now. That, Councilmember Frye, you're still on the board.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for the record that during the budget deliberations, I was consistent in my desire to reduce property taxes. My motion on August 27th to reduce property taxes was not unexpected or unknown to the public or anyone else.
Sure. Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. And Mayor, you said something that I completely agree with, of maybe taking our time and slowing this down. So Councilmember Ballard, I'm just curious, and I understand you don't want this, the A Price Woodard project just to go away. I understand that. So I'm curious of the temperature of if today we would vote for the four hydration stations and the Nafsker Park project to move forward and delay the A Price Woodard bathroom station until October 3rd so that staff has adequate time to find a funding source? Just a thought.
I guess I just don't understand because they've suggested several different options of how we could finish it today and just be done with it. We have, and I appreciate you even offering a suggestion, but I guess that would be my thing. I don't know why we can't either put it in the CIP or one of the other options that the city manager suggested. I guess that's kind of where I'm at.
I just was curious about trying to make it clean so that we know exactly where the funding source is coming from. Because normally, if it comes out of, you know, if it's something you're advocating, it'll come out of your CIP dollars and that's putting you on the spot right now. So just a thought, that that way it wouldn't get lost if we said, you know, we want to approve this and then we'll bring that one back October 3rd. It would be cleaner for the public. We wouldn't be making sausage from the bench. It was just a thought for consideration. Try and help us get to yes for everyone.
Thank you.
All right, again, we do have a long agenda and I think that we've somewhat beat up a dead horse here. I think that we got Johnson on the board to speak to it. I'll make my motion, or clarify my motion. There's been a motion and a second. I will clarify the motion, move forward, and see where we land here. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I guess I should have directed some questions to Councilmember Ballard. I appreciate Councilmember Tuttle's recommendation. So you had, you just brought up the CIP, which was what I was asking Bob about. Would you be okay with putting that in the CIP? Because the comment that Bob made was it would be in the '25 CIP. So it wouldn't go away. It would get put in there. All, everything else would go forward. This technically would be approved. And then there would be opportunity to plan for the location for that. The funding would be cleaner. So, but if that was the case, then you would still have that Nafsker pilot time. And it probably wouldn't be a full year because it's $200,000. But is that something you're okay with?
Yes and no. I've just been working on this for a really long time and pestering Bob like you can't believe. And so to just, even though it's only one piece, like pushing it off even longer is a little frustrating and I don't, you know. It's a tough process to get stuff in the CIP and, you know, get your projects carried out. And, you know, I haven't even gotten to put any projects that I want to in the CIP yet. I'm still carrying out the former Councilmember for District 6. So I don't really want to push it out. I mean, ultimately, it's still a win, assuming that it happens. We know how stuff shifts around, you know, in the CIP as well. I still wish we could get it all done today. But we have other things that are equally as important that we need to move on to on the agenda. So I guess we'll see what happens with the vote.
So just to follow up, that would be one vote today that does that. But then Councilmember Tuttle's suggestion brings it back this year with an identified funding source. So would that be better? Because it doesn't then go away.
I think I'd be more interested in, sorry, Councilmember Johnson, Councilmember Tuttle's suggestion to bring it back on the 3rd, assuming we can find a funding source before then.
One of my questions is, if we're looking for a funding source, why don't we bring back to the 3rd a funding source to replenish the Woodard Park project? Because from my understanding, that's not pressing or immediate. That's done the planning. So we could bring up, if we pass this as is, we can let staff work on that $200,000. We don't have to identify that source, but we can set a date to bring that back up in the very near future to ensure that the Woodard project is left whole while the District 6 project moves forward. So that's also another option. Because I do think, I do understand the council members' concern of, well, we had to rehash in the budget. Well, why don't we make, as part of the motion, that within two weeks, we'll have a funding source identified to make the Woodard projects move forward. And you have my support for that, of course. And we'll be able to really achieve both these outcomes while not, I guess, jumping too much into the alternating of the current plans that staff has put together in the current proposal. I think that would, might get us where we need to be. I know Bob jumped up, so what do you think, Bob?
And I.
Mr. Manager.
I'm going to backpedal a little bit because I, that's what I had recommended originally.
Of course it is.
But as I think through it, and I understand the concerns that the money that was received from the Hyatt funds, it was not intended to be used for this type of improvement. Anything that you would do that would use those dollars today and then backfill with the CIP, I understand the uncertainty with that. And so what you could, to me, the cleanest thing to do right now would be keep those funds in reserve with the understanding now clear to staff that you want those dollars used for beautification at some point in the future, right? Whenever we decide what we're going to do along the river. And then I would recommend that you use $200,000 from the 2024 park improvement project for this, for the A Price Woodard restroom, if that's the direction you want to go. And then you've got a funding source and then we'll consider what we'll do next year in the CIP to backfill those dollars. It'll be up to us to try to find, see if we can find $200,000 so we can keep that project whole next year in 2024. That would be the cleanest way to do it if the desire is to move forward with A Price Woodard restrooms this year.
For both. Okay, cleanest way to do it, and we can do it. And it'll get us to both, both goals. The Woodard Park, the bathrooms. And yes, Adam, Legal.
Well, this is not a legal question so much as we have a bonding resolution attached to this. And does this affect the bonding resolution? Does it need to be amended? I'm just asking the question.
The answer is yes, it would need to be.
Councilmember Tuttle.
But it's a simple change, which you could make from the bench, I believe.
Councilmember Tuttle.
When I pushed it, I was going to make a substitute motion. Now I think I'm more confused than before. I'm not making this motion, Jennifer. I'm just, since we're making sausage, let's just do it. But my potential motion was going to be that recommend city council approve the budget and adopt the bonding resolution, authorize the necessary signatures for the four hydration stations and the outdoor restroom in Nafsker Park, and direct staff to come back October 10th with a plan for the A Price Woodard outdoor restroom and park beautification.
Wait, did you say the two bathrooms plus four restrooms?
No. Now, and have staff come back with a plan for October 3rd. And the reason I said October 3rd is because there's a workshop in there in two weeks. So, but I'm not sure now if that's the appropriate motion to make. So I'm not making it as a motion. I'm just asking if all of the points of clarification that I've heard is that where we're moving toward.
So.
Who would have thought?
I mean, yeah, or, um. The, it's basically the Frye motion with the, but come back and tell us how we're going to fund Woodard Park. The problem with that is we're not spending the Woodard Park money if we're only doing one of the restrooms. So I would support the motion if it is to pass the document we have with, but we're coming back on the 3rd to make sure that we have an alternative funding source to keep Woodard Park whole. I think if we did that, that would actually distinguish the motion from the previous substitute motion that failed. It would clarify my motion, to be frank. And I think it would hit both goals. So I love we're having a discussion about this, guys.
Rather than a second substitute motion, maybe if you want to accept an amendment to your underlying motion to incorporate Councilmember Tuttle's suggestion, that might be incorporating the manager's language as well.
I would actually, because she articulated so well. I would, but I would like to see both the, both the restrooms for hydration stations, but direct staff on the 3rd to come back with a plan so that we can ensure that Woodard Park's funds are whole. Rather that's a transfer or rather that is another way to. We'll give staff the flexibility to get us there as easy as possible. So, so yes, I think coming back on the 3rd to ensure that we're able to, to stay focused on the Woodard project would be my motion while letting this move forward so that we don't hold this up.
I maintain my second.
Councilmember Frye.
There's been so many motions, I'm kind of losing track.
Don't get emotional about the motions.
Yeah. I have a struggle supporting the blanket statement of doing both of these projects, the hydration stations and the bathrooms, without knowing where the funding is coming from until October 3rd or October 10th. As expressed earlier multiple times, we don't know what our maintenance costs are going to be on this. And to, and we have major maintenance issues throughout our park system with vandalism of playgrounds. We have roofing shingles missing from shelters. We can't keep up with the maintenance we have now. And we're talking about taking money out of the maintenance to build a new facility. I think our number one priority from our residents is take better care of the stuff we have before we start building new things. And until we know exactly where this funding is coming from, I can't support a blanket motion to say, let's build it. I would rather us slow down. And I know Councilmember Ballard is frustrated at the speed of government, but that's the world we're in. We need to be mindful of the taxpayer dollars and make sure that we're going into this with eyes wide open so that we can handle it in the future. And we do have it properly budgeted and we are able to maintain it at a rate that people are going to use them once a day. Eyes is not going to cut it, folks, clearly. And we have no idea what our maintenance costs are going to be on this. We can project, but that's why I can't support this motion to approve both projects and then decide the funding later. I'd rather slow down, go to October 3rd, and have the staff present identifying revenue, or funding sources for both projects.
All right. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. To Councilmember Frye's point, should this motion pass on October 3rd, could we have a assumed or projected maintenance cost? Look at what the CID does cover, at least at Nafsker, and what that might look like going forward? I know we don't know how many times a day, outside of the one that was said, but I would assume even with Mr. Ballard's comment, it'd probably at least be twice a morning and an evening just what that cost would be and the impact to us. I feel more comfortable at Nafsker because of that CID, even though we haven't, I haven't seen those numbers in a few weeks. But I feel more comfortable there. I'll feel more comfortable about Price Woodard once the development happens down there because that'd generate more funds for us. But I think to Councilmember Frye's point on the 3rd, if we had some of those projections, that would be helpful.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a comment. Councilmember Frye, I appreciate you. I, the speed of government is extremely, extremely frustrating. But to me, that's not the problem that we're talking about. The problem that we're talking about is for decades, we've been ignoring these problems, you know, of offering some, we'll say, amenities to the public that they deserve and that every city, town should be offering, including Wichita in the core of our city, in downtown. And we hardly have any. And so, you know, there is one at Woodard Park that's all boarded up, that has been for I don't know how long. And there is one in Old Town, you know. I get what you're saying, but also not offering anything and scooping poop and having $50,000 in our budget to clean feces up downtown also isn't working. So just comments, I'm not upset. I just, I really, honestly, this is the best conversation, one of the best that we've had since I've been at the bench. And it's literally about pee and poop, which is kind of funny. But these things are really, really, really important. And, you know, we have big projects downtown that are going to continue to go. But these real core things that we should be offering in our city have gone unnoticed, or have gone, they have been ignored for a very long time and it's time that we pay a little bit of attention to them. So thank you to my colleagues for entertaining this conversation. And can we please vote soon?
With that, clerk, roll the roll. Members cast their vote.
Wait, which one are we voting on?
Yeah, could we repeat the motion?
We were so close, people. So close. All right, the motion is to, to move forward with the current plan, but to have staff come back on October 3rd with a funding strategy or plan to ensure that the Woodard Park, the $200,000 is into the Woodard Park plan moving forward. So we're going to give staff enough time to talk with council, to talk with staff, to figure out what is the best way to keep Woodard whole while we move forward with the, with the plan for the two restrooms for hydration stations.
Mr. Mayor, what you would be doing is approving the budget, but not the bonding resolution. We'll bring that back to you in October.
That's what I said. Approving the budget, but not the bonding resolution, which will come back to us on October 3rd.
Right.
Motion has been seconded multiple times by my colleague and good friend, Councilmember Johnson. Clerk, roll the roll. Members will cast their vote. Will someone please wake Vice Mayor Hoheisel up?
Mayor, I can't request to speak, but I'd like to make a substitute motion.
Motion has been made. A motion is seconded. We're voting. A substitute motion this time is out of order.
But there's an opportunity to make a substitute motion before the vote.
Correct.
But the vote is made. Okay, sure, I guess. I mean, there's someone that's voted. Now how do we, we have to clear the voting before the vote, right? Is that what the ordinance says?
They didn't give me the opportunity to speak to the motion.
You had more opportunities to speak to this.
After this motion was made and seconded, I did not have the opportunity to speak to the motion.
I think you made a substitute motion at one point during that time.
On this one right here.
You had your name off the board that is open to make the, to make a, to vote, vote no if you need to. But I feel like we have beaten this. The ordinance states that you can make a substitute motion before roll call is called. We're now voting.
I tried. Slate wasn't open.
So Legal, how do we back out?
That's your determination to make. If he tried to make the motion, you can evaluate that. If he says he tried, you want to give that, grant that. That's the chair's discretion.
That's what I assumed and we're voting. Let's, let's, come on, guys, this took us an hour.
Thanks for being transparent.
Clerk, roll the roll. Members cast their vote.
Aye.
Ever received four yea votes to two nay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Design concept for Douglas Avenue from Seneca Street to Meridian Avenue.[1769.81] Design concept for Douglas Avenue from Seneca Street to Meridian Avenue.
Good morning, Mayor, City Councilmembers. Paul Gunson for the record, Public Works and Utilities. The item before you is design concept for improvements to Douglas Avenue from Seneca Street to Meridian Avenue. This project is located in both Districts 4 and 6. Project limits are shown on the screen with Seneca at the right end of the red line and Meridian at the left side. Brief history on this project. Project was identified in the 2001 Delano Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. It was also included in the 2015 Community Investments Plan, the comprehensive plan for Wichita, Sedgwick County, and it was again included in the 2019 Delano Neighborhood Plan that was an update of the 2001 plan.
Question.
The 2000, this is a snapshot from one of the sheets in the 2001 Delano Neighborhood Revitalization Plan. As you can see, towards Seneca or the east end of the project is commercial mixed use. There is a transitional area towards the middle where the railroad tracks are, and then it is residential use towards the west end of the project towards Meridian. Also included in the plan, the Delano, Delano Plan identified public greenways, as identified in green adjacent to Douglas Street that would keep the existing trees and green space. The 2015 Communities Investment Plan also show some new employment opportunities and economic development near the Seneca intersection, similar to what has been completed on the east side of Seneca through Delano. Again, the area near the tracks identified commercial and industrial uses, and also residential towards the west end as, as the Delano Plan had shown as well. The project was programmed into the Capital Improvement Program in 2018. Each year, we also meet with the Design Council and go over the capital improvement projects. This project was also recommended by the Design Council as a special considerations project for additional aesthetic improvements and public art. The project was also submitted to the Wichita Area Metropolitan Planning Organization for consideration to be included in the Transportation Improvement Program. That project was selected by the Project Selection Committee and was programmed into the WAMPO tip in 2022. On July 12th, 2022, the City Council approved the design contract with WSP. Initial stakeholder information meetings was held August 23rd of 2022, and there were two public open houses on September, one on September 15th and one on October 26th, 2022. Concepts were developed based on the public input received from the open houses and the initial stakeholder information meeting, and that concept was presented to the Wichita Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board on April 10th. At that time, the board requested staff to evaluate alternative design options for cyclist WSP, we worked with WSP to develop a new concept. That new concept was taken back to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board on May 8th, and that concept I will show you in a few minutes that they had approved. On June 5th, District Advisory Board 4 unanimously opposed the design concept. A week later, District 6 unanimously approved the design concept. I presented the project again back to District 4 on August 7th with additional information that was not presented at the original District Advisory 4 meeting, and the DAB voted 6-2 in opposition of the design concept at that meeting. I'll show you some pictures of the existing conditions on Douglas Street. There is poor drainage due to the minimal drainage infrastructure throughout the corridor, which is leading to pavement deterioration. There's water standing in the driveways after rain events, and as you can see on the picture on the right, many other driveways or approaches within the corridor have very small radiuses to assist vehicles getting in and out. Also along the corridor, there are sections of sidewalk that are narrow and uneven. The proposed project concept you will see in a few minutes shows six-foot sidewalk that will be replaced in the existing location with minimal impact to trees, and this will improve pedestrian accessibility and walkability. Again, showing some existing conditions, this is just east of Meridian, looking east. Currently, the roadway is striped as a two-lane roadway with poorly marked on-street parking. Again, the goal is to keep the existing street trees as many as possible, as well as the existing greenway space you see in the picture. As you can see, there are a few parked cars along the south curb line going east, and that kinda identifies this as a one-lane roadway. On the westbound side, you do not see any vehicles parked within this area, within this picture, and that provides the opportunity for motorists to drive it as a two-lane roadway, which causes a little bit confusing as they reach a parked vehicle. This is just east, or I'm sorry, west of Seneca, looking east. You can see where we introduced the additional pavement markings to identify it as a two-lane roadway in each direction with a left turn lane at the Seneca intersection. The existing lane configuration for the west approach at Seneca and Douglas will remain the same. We will have a dedicated right turn lane for eastbound traffic, one-through lane, and dedicate a left turn lane for eastbound traffic as well. There will be two lanes traveling westbound through the intersection, and the outside lane will continue to exposition, and then it will be a, a turn onto that street with only one westbound lane continuing. This is a proposed concept of the project. This is a typical street, this is shown between Charles and Clarence. It shows the six-foot sidewalk, there's approximately 18 feet of green space, dedicated parking, two travel lanes, and then a center left turn lane, two-way left turn lane. The project will also include curb extensions at the intersections. As I mentioned, six-foot sidewalk, water line improvements, and clearly defined on-street parking. I will show some signal improvements as well here in a few minutes. The curb extensions at the intersections will again identify the on-street parking, shorten the crossing distance for pedestrians to cross Douglas Street, and calm traffic. The two-way left turn lane will provide dedicated space for left turn vehicles into the approximately 100-drive approaches within the corridor. And also shown on this picture are the shared lane use markings to identify that cyclists are, can be present and share the lane with vehicle, vehicles. There are approximately eight blocks of stormwater sewer that will be included in this project to improve storm drainage. I wanted to point out, also shown on this, this drawing, the sidewalk there near Athenian is shift south, as it does now. Our concept that we had taken to the District Advisory Board had the sidewalk remaining at the property line, as it is on the east side of Athenian. After hearing some concerns from adjacent property owners and fences along the sidewalk, we have, we reevaluated that. We will keep the existing, we will keep the sidewalk where it is now. Fences may need to be removed and reset during construction, but we will not require them to move them back to the property line. We will work with the property owners as we go through further design. The sidewalk will be widened to six feet, and again, we will minimize the impact to trees within these locations. As I mentioned before, we would do curb extensions at the intersections to identify and protect the parking. This will allow residents to park on the street and/or visitors. Currently, we have witnessed vehicles parking in driveways that are blocking the sidewalks. We are hoping when we identify this parking and provide space for them, knowing that they can park out there, folks can park out there instead of blocking driveways. The curb extensions, again, reduce the, the crossing width as these are, and the, we will have eight foot of parking identified to, that will accommodate large vehicles as well. There are two existing crosswalks, signalized crosswalks within the corridor. Those will be upgraded, replaced with new equipment. The drive approaches will be reconstructed, showing larger radius to help motorists get in and out of their approaches. And we are investigating raised intersections at the pedestrian crosswalks, similar to what we have done in Old Town at Second Street, on Second Street, as well as in front of Riverfront Stadium on McLean Boulevard. This will help slow traffic. We are, the current speed limit along this corridor is 35 miles per hour. East of Seneca, the speed limit is 30 miles per hour. With these improvements, with curb extensions, possible raised crosswalks, we will design the, the project and sign it as 30 miles per hour. If the recommended action is to approve the design concept, if the council approves the design concept this morning, estimated construction will begin in 2024. Currently, the Transportation Improvement Program has $3.9 million programmed in 2024 and 2025 of federal money. That is approximately $3.9 million. I will answer any questions.
Other questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there improvement in the public on this item? See none? We'll bring this, oh, my goodness, I am so sorry. Yes, so if you're speaking from the public, just please make your way towards the front, and I will see you walk towards us and therefore be able to recognize you. And if you're new, as this gentleman's walking forward, if you are new to speaking at the podium, we ask you to say your name, your address, if you're comfortable, and also be mindful of the clock. It's five full minutes, which is really an eternity. If you go over, I'm gonna do one of these, I don't wanna cut you off, so if I do this, just finish up your thought. Thank you for being here, though.
Alan Holloway. I live on the northwest corner of St. Clair and Douglas.
Welcome.
And the very first meeting back June 5th, it was shot, the proposal was voted down unanimously. It came back in August, and the first question that was asked after looking at the proposal was what is different from the June proposal? And the answer was nothing. But yet, two people went ahead and voted for it, that's how we got here. The, one of the reasons was traffic accidents, this would reduce traffic accidents. I purchased my house in 2011, so I've lived there 12, over 12 years, and I've seen one accident. But no, I saw two. There was a drunk that left the Shamrock about 2:00 in the morning and, and hit a parked So accidents is not really a big item, and I've never seen an accident at Seneca and Douglas. I know there has to be accidents, that's a really busy corner, but I've never seen one. And I'm retired, and I drive up and down there all the time. One of the other complaints I've got is we put in the center turn lane, but there's, and they say that reduces people making left turns in the driveways. That's, doesn't really happen very often. I've never get, get held up by it very often. And then, one of the other items was the parallel parking on the side. Those lanes are only eight foot wide, and a Silverado and an F-150 is almost eight foot wide. So now you got the mirrors, and right now, if I, I don't parallel park in front of my house very often, but if I do, I can park, and everybody's driving down the center, I can open my door and they just keep going by. But with that center lane and the yellow lines they're gonna put in, the cars going down are gonna be about 12, 12 inches from my, from my truck if it's parked out there. If you got some big mirrors, like an F-250, you might have your mirror out in the, in the drive lane, that's gonna be dangerous. And where are the buses gonna stop to let people off and on? If you have cars parked out there, it's gonna be slowing traffic down that way, a lot of trash service and moving trucks and other big trucks going down through there. And then, we're gonna spend one and a half million dollars of Wichita taxpayer money, and what is it, 3.9 of federal funds? So we're worried about building four hydration stations and two bathrooms, and we're gonna spend one and a half million dollars for cosmetic purposes for this. And I will agree that the sidewalks are in pretty poor shape in certain areas. Could probably go in and replace those, a lot cheaper than one and a half million dollars to fix the non-existent. So we're just doing cosmetic work and not gaining anything. We could actually be making, making it less safe by reducing the driving lane to eight, eight feet. And then I think we have a, is it a 10-feet center turn lane that you don't really need? So anyway, we oughta think about spending one and a half million taxpayer dollars to do some, to fix something that's not a problem. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Further input from the public?
Good morning.
Morning.
I am definitely improved of this, and to make the sidewalks wider, it's gonna be a, a big improvement for the disabled and blind community to get around the, the city along Douglas and, and that, so please approve this, and it's needed on, on this item. So, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Andrew, for being here. Further input from the public? Just come on down.
Good morning, and thank you for giving me a chance to speak. My name is Joe Foster, and I live at 2403 West Douglas. That's right on the corner of Douglas and Sedgwick. I want you to please consider removing the turn lane and redesign, redesigning that area from Vine Street to Meridian. It simply does not work in a residential area of West Douglas. I can see how the third lane will help in commercial settings where multiple vehicles are trying to enter or exit a business parking lot to do short-term parking, shopping during business hours. But please be aware that the residents of West Douglas, west of Vine Street, have opposed the narrowing of the street and removal on street parking. The residential area has special considerations that will be impeded by the flow of traffic if not addressed by your proposed improvement. As with all residential areas, we have school buses, trash services trucks, lawn service trucks, postal trucks, UPS trucks, FedEx trucks, and now Amazon trucks along with being on the city bus route. And I am positive that I- And I am positive that I have left out some of the service centers that are unique to residential neighborhoods. All of the above traffic are not looking for a center turn lane, but are instead are looking for short-term parking at the curb. As not to disrupt the flow of traffic is to load and unload their services and goods to the households. In the evenings, after a workday, traffic has ended, the residency does use that curb service for parking for their friends and families when they come over to visit and have celebrations. With this being said, please fix the stormwater drainage, repave the street if you must, but leave our on-street parking alone, as its design is light years ahead when it comes to what you call traffic calming. I believe if you would listen to the residents who live on West Douglas, you might have the support to move forward. I mean, we, the third, that center traffic, it has destroyed Meridian Street. It has not calmed that, calmed traffic there. You get down there during the rush hour, and if someone pulls into that turn lane, they're not going to be able to turn into a driveway of their house because the traffic is already packed. But like I said, you know, if you look at, if you look at how much, how much traffic flow that third lane has taken away, it's, you know, it's just detrimental to the Delano District. But thank you.
Thank you. I know we had a couple other people. We'll go with you, sir, and then you politely continue to raise your hand. I'm going to reserve the next spot for you. Welcome.
Hello, Vincent Hancock. In this particular respect, I'm representing Delano United, which is a combination of Delano businesses, Delano clergy, and Delano residents. Just did some quick math on my fingers. This is the sixth time I've seen this presentation, because over 22 years, this has been something the neighborhood has been looking forward to, not just with that first 2001 plan. For 10 years, I myself have been talking with Delano businesses and residents who said, hey, what happened on the east end of West Douglas? We're going to get some streetscaping improvements on the west end. It will come eventually. Be patient. As Maggie pointed out, it's the speed of government. So we had to wait for that to happen. With Delano United being the community development coalition for this neighborhood, we've been working with staff integrally on making sure that this is going to meet the needs. Look at the stakeholders. We've got disabled walkers, abled walkers, wheelchairs, people with walkers, bicycles, people who are used to bicycling, bicycles for people who are really not used to and don't want to be right in the lanes of traffics. And you've got all the different forms of traffic. And you've got the businesses, you have the residents. There are so many different stakeholders, there are so many different ways to do this. And I've seen staff tweak the design as it went in front of Bike and Ped a couple times, tweak the design in the presentation when it went in front of the different district advisory boards. Is there a perfect solution that will meet all the stakeholder needs? I don't believe so. Is this a very reasonable compromise? I believe so. I also want to, in addition to thanking engineering staff, want to thank the city manager for working with our president on misunderstanding of where some property lines were versus where some sidewalks were. That was something that was a great concern to the neighbors, that didn't come up until the tail end. So I encourage all of our neighbors, come to the neighborhood advisory, neighborhood meetings. This is where we get our information going, and I do believe, overall, most of the businesses, clergy, and residents in this neighborhood do support the project. So appreciate you guys.
My name is Greg Schmidtgens. I'm at 2111 West Douglas, so right in the middle of the residential section for District 4. The, in addition to some of the other concerns, I've attended several of the informational meetings, the advisory board meetings. Two other things that were discussed at those meetings is, when it comes to the minimal impact for the, to the trees, there's, there's a lot of trees that are within two feet of the existing sidewalks, and we, I have not heard what's going to happen to a bunch of those trees, or what's going to happen to replace trees that get removed. And a second thing that was discussed several times is that the, we were a little surprised, my wife and I, several of us are, you know, at least casual bikers, and that the Bicycle and Pedestrian Board didn't want dedicated bike lanes. Instead, the current configuration makes the bike, the bicyclists go into the traffic lane at every curb extension. So, not really sure how they, why that is better, but, you know, those are some of the concerns that we heard, but I know that you guys are going to do the best because, as I've also heard, we're not looking at just now, we're also looking at the future. So, thank you.
Thank you. Further input from the public on this item? Good morning, and welcome.
Hey, good morning. Good morning. I wanted to make a comment as an avid biker, thank you for that, that the street on Douglas is very wide, and it gets very scary sometimes, just trying to bike and get by. So if there's a way that maybe we can, maybe shorten it up a little bit, I think it would be good. That's all.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Further input from the public? All right, see none. We're going to bring discussion back to the bench. Discussion on this item, the chair recognizes Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Paul, can I ask a question? And thank you to you and your team for all your work on this, and thanks to the community members who came to speak today. We appreciate your input very much, and everyone who attended district advisory board meetings to get input and so that we could get, hopefully, to a good place on this. One of the speakers made the comment that we're going to be removing on-street parking, and I've been a little involved in this because of WAMPO and, you know, chatting with staff about this project, especially because of the walking and biking aspect, but can you address that? I didn't think we were eliminating on-street parking. Can, can you address that for me, Paul? Thank you.
We are not eliminating on-street parking. Within this slide here, we do show eight feet of parking adjacent to the curb line. So we are better defining where vehicles can park. As I mentioned before, the curb extensions at the intersections, they will be constructed in areas where folks shouldn't be parking that close to the intersection anyway. So we will clearly identify where folks can park. We also have, as shown here, we have the eight-foot of parking area. In addition to that, we have the two-foot of gutter pan. So we, that provides 10 feet of space for vehicles to park.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks. Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you for your work on this. This is a project I had heard about for a while, not as long as one of the previous speakers, but I do know that many people were excited about getting some symmetry between East Douglas and going into West Douglas. As a resident in that area for one year when I was at Friends University, I think the stormwater piece is really important. I used to hate driving my car that sat really low when it was raining because of all the water that would accumulate over there. So I just want to say I appreciate that, and really want to highlight more of the stormwater piece of this, and really getting that drainage piece under control, and trying to put us on the path to get that plan passed that they've been waiting on for 20 years. So just wanted to put that out there.
Councilmember Ballard.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to echo some of Councilmember Johnson's comments. Since District 4 and District 6 kind of split Douglas, we've had a lot of robust discussion with District 6, and it did pass my DAB. I've gotten lots of emails, some that started out maybe frustrated, but I think it was because they didn't really understand the project. I think maybe some people were confused that it was just an aesthetics project, so I appreciate you really pointing out and showing the pictures of the drainage problems and different things like that. I did get an email from somebody in the Bike Ped community that had asked if the, and I'm sorry if I missed this, if the speed was going to be reduced. Is, and could you address that?
Yes, currently, the speed limit is posted at 35 miles per hour.
It's at 35?
At 35, yes. West of Seneca, it's 35 miles per hour. East of Seneca is 30. With these proposed concepts, we will post the speed limit at 30 miles per hour. With the curb extensions, some of the, you know, the raised pedestrian crossings, we feel that that's appropriate.
Okay, awesome. And my only other question is, I talked to New Way, and so I already answered their question, but Los Pinos, which is another one of the businesses, was concerned about if we could try to make sure that the businesses had access to, or people could visit their places and have access to the restaurants and different retail. So is there a plan for that during construction?
Yes, and I did discuss the gentleman from New Way. He has two approaches, and I discussed with him that, you know, one of those approaches might be closed at one time, instead of constructing half of the driveway, you know. So we can work with the adjacent property owners or the businesses to determine, you know, if they have multiple driveways, it might be better to construct one completely at a time. If they only have one, then we do have at a time. So we will work with them during construction.
Yeah, if you could reach out to them.
Okay.
I think they would certainly appreciate it.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Blueba.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm pretty torn on this one because, you know, businesses have reached out to me, they're, they think it's great, you know? Half this is business, half of it's residential. Bike Ped approved it. Delano Neighborhood approved it, and then it got rejected by my DAB two times. Individual bicyclists do not like the design. Homeowners does not seem like, and majority like, the design. So there's benefits in this both. There's a lot more need on Maple and other areas, I realize, coming out of a WAMPO bucket. We just can't move it from here to there, but I hope in the future, we look at the whole area and not maybe necessarily what's more Bike and Ped friendly, and look at, you know, where we really have the need. I will probably not be able to support this. I'm assuming it probably will go through without my support. I hope we listen to these homeowners, I hope we listen to these bicyclists, and I hope we take their input seriously, and, because this is a lot of money, not just from City Wichita, but federal tax dollars, so hopefully we utilize all that to its maximum end, and we get the input that we need. Realize we, some people have said they've heard this six times, some people have not, and felt like their voice hasn't been heard in ear. There was a lot of frustration with my DAB. Whenever it was presented, it came back to us, and it came back exactly the same way, and none of their input was exercised. So that was very frustrating for my DAB, and probably had a lot to do with another unanimous vote against it.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Forgot to give my usual comments. So bike lanes, I know that those are not protected, and I try to come up with a different idea every time. So I Googled, because I could not remember, the circular speed bumps that are, you know, probably that high, but just something that differentiates the street from the bike lanes, if that's something we could consider as we get into past design, just a way, it's not full protection, but at least it may jar someone or wake them up, just, again, something more than just a paint.
Further discussion? See none, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's interesting, because normally, we go to one of our council members when it comes for a motion, this resides in District 4, and it's also resides in District 6. It seems like there might be a split with this, so I'm going to recognize District 6, although usually I'd recognize District 4, since District 6 had the last motion, or kind of spoke to the last motion, his last item. So with that, I recognize Councilmember Ballard of District 6.
Thank you, Mayor. With that, I would like to take the recommended action and approve the design concept.
Second. Motion has been made and then seconded. Clerk will open her roll. Members cast their vote.
Aye.
Oh, Mike's still here. Let the record show that Vice Mayor Hoheizow has voted aye. Haven't received six yea votes to one nay. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
2024 Cultural Funding Allocation Recommendations.
Good morning, welcome.
Hello, good morning, Mayor. Councilwoman Nkunka, Director of Arts and Cultural Services with the City Manager's Office, here to present the recommendations that the Cultural Funding Committee has been working on over the last few months. A little bit about the program itself. The Cultural Funding Committee makes funding recommendations to city council for local artists and arts and cultural organizations. The committee follows the funding guidelines set in the 2013 Cultural Plan Addendum, and I do want to just make sure to point out that we are under a strategic plan review at the moment, and that development will likely change the guidelines to this process in the future. We have some known limitations of the program, but it's what we have to work with today. The grant cycle itself is administered annually, and the applications are new and competitive each year. We always remind the applicants and the committee themselves that previous-year applications and previously received grant amounts are not considered for the current review process, and funding is never guaranteed, despite many recipients receiving funding year over year in this program. They are not multi-year grants. It really is a fresh, competitive program each and every year. There are three main sections of the cultural funding grants. The categories are cultural funding operational grants, which are the bulk of the program historically and what we'll see today, developing arts grants, and then artist access grants. Did want to pull out artist access in particular to talk a little bit about it. Something that we've seen over the last few years is that we don't have a lot of applicants into this program, because previous applicants needed to know what they wanted to do, 12, 16 months, almost, could be up to 18 months of what they would be applying for, for an individual artist, for a professional development opportunity. So the committee is recommending that we push back the application cycle to quarter four of this year. Typically, we would have opened applications a few months ago, and applicants would have to know again what they wanted to do many, many months outside of it. So the committee is recommending moving the application itself, and recommending a specific amount of funding be set aside for that program specifically, so that more applicants have the opportunity to apply, and that we can see more success in that program. We anticipate that applications will be open for the Artist Access Grant for 2024 funding by the end of this month, with potentially a first round of review before the end of the calendar year. And this grant specifically is designed to support the professional development of artists. It's not for the creation of art itself. And funding examples may include, but aren't limited to conferences, trainings, website development, professional services like accounting, or if you're a performer, a headshot package. So again, it's professional development, or professional capacity building opportunities, not the creation of art itself. New things that we encountered this year that we're really excited about is that we had a web-based grant portal this year entitled Submittable. This is the same platform that the state uses and a lot of comparable grant makers and the arts use. Previously, it was all done by paper, and I just want to give a shout out to my associate, Jesse Cozar, Cultural Arts Administrator, for really onboarding this program and making the platform a lot easier for both applicants and reviewers alike. And then also, we did a lot of outreach this year. We had 31 applications between the two programs that we had open, including nine applicants which had never applied before. So it's great to see our arts community growing and thriving, and that we were able to have a lot of new applicants into the program this year. The projected funding for the competitive grant program is estimated at about $432,000, which is the equivalent of what we allocated last year. The exact number isn't finalized until the end of the year, of which $422,700 was allocated or recommended for funding. The committee recommends setting aside $10,008 to be reserved for the Artist Access Grant Program. And then, just so you know, what is all being reviewed in the grant program itself, that they're competitive and that they're evaluated based on the quality of organization, financial stability, and community impact. And those guidelines, again, are set forth in our Cultural Plan Addendum. So, the recommendations for 2024 funding from the committee come to 24 applicants, and reserving the Artist Access Fund. and reserving the Artist Access Fund with a total of $432,708. Oh, I'm cutting off a little bit, but I'll see if I can get through this. Cultural Funding Operational Grants in the amount of, for Exploration Place, $50,700. Wichita Symphony Society at $41,200. Mark Arts at $41,200. Music Theater Wichita, $38,800. Arts Partners, $30,400. The Kansas African American Museum, $26,100. Let's see where I'm landing here. I think Ulrich cutoff at $26,100. Bear with me here. Orpheum Performing Arts Center, $25,900. Ballet Wichita, $22,700. Harvester Arts, $17,300. Friends of the Great Plain Nature Center, $16,200. The Wichita Public Library Foundation, $14,400. PBS Kansas, $13,600. KMUW at $13,300, I believe. Forum Theater Company at $10,000. Wichita Grand Opera at $9,700. Arise, $6,300. Regina Klenjowski Dance Company, $4,600. Wichita Jazz Festival, $3,200. Opera Kansas, $2,700. Metropolitan Ballet at $2,600. Don't think I missed one. Wichita Chamber Corral, $2,300. Make ICT, $1,900. McCormick School Museum Incorporated at $1,500. My apologies, there is a discrepancy in that one. It should read $1,500. For a total recommended funding allocation of $422,700, and with the Artist Access Grant reserving $10,008. And the recommendation in full is to approve the 2024 funding allocations recommended for arts and cultural organizations by the Cultural Funding Committee and authorize the necessary signatures. And with that, I'm available for questions. I do also want to point out that Beth Oaks, our Chair of the Cultural Funding Committee, is in the room today, if there's any questions directed towards the committee itself.
All right, Councilmember Johnson, questions for staff?
Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, Lindsey. I had a question around the developing arts grants. So reading the packet, one of the committee members recused themselves from the meeting, meaning that they were not a part of the discussion nor influencing a vote, yet there was a lot of concern about conflict of interest. But it seems that from this, there was no conflict, and they are not funded. And as an organization, they tend to really work with folks who are not in the process of, you know, being a well-known artist in a city. Is there any more insight to that as to why they were left out outside of what seemed to be a last-minute discussion about their application not fitting the guidelines?
That's a great question. I'm happy to attempt to tackle it, and Beth Oaks may want to chime in as well. So the two applicants for developing arts organizations are really, it's a, it's a very specific allocation that can be funded for it, so it's for capacity building. Both of the applicants, regardless of the potential conflict of interest that was identified in, in the, in the report, were not necessarily capacity building funds that were requested. So ultimately, the committee felt that neither applicant was requesting funds for the appropriate use of the grant itself, though we did have some conflict of interest questions that came, came about. Staff were prepared to follow up with legal about it. We did, the decision was still made that neither applicant was applying for the appropriate use of funding.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Thank you, Lindsey, for the presentation. Just a quick question regarding the large organization funding. I noticed that Exploration Place had the highest score, but were reduced by 20% over their 23 allocation, and they had eight positive comments and only one semi-negative, whereas Mark Arts had a lower score, but received a 47% increase from their 23 allocation and had five positive comments and three negative comments. So help me understand why one gets rewarded for not having as many positive comments and the other one gets a lesser amount, even though they perform better?
Right. Really great questions, and kind of the base of maybe my response to that is there are so many variables that make up the funding year to year, so we really discourage comparing year-to-year funding. In the large category specifically this year, we had 14 eligible applicants, seven of which were in the program last year. So we doubled our amount of applicants in the large category specifically, so we saw a lot of variance there. So the funding that is available to be allocated doesn't change necessarily, but applicant pool changes greatly from year to year. And then we don't necessarily, or we, the committee doesn't necessarily compare grant to grant, or they, they look at that, that total score. So Mark Arts in particular scored very high this year in comparison to perhaps where they were last year, versus Exploration Place has been sat at the top of, of the pool for, for a handful of years. I think because we saw new applicants receive funding in the large category specifically this year, that fluctuated kind of the max amount that was presented, and then what the lowest in the large category was presented. I do also want to point out that the committee had four new members on it this year. We had nine total committee members reviewing, so four of nine are, were looking at these applications for the first time, so they would have not even been aware of the past year's funding. So the variables just change so greatly year to year that we really discourage trying to compare them, the amount of funding that's given.
But even beyond the comparison, I, I don't understand how an organization has that high of a score and eight positive comments gets reduced, when another organization has more negative comments and gets an increase. And again, that's not comparing those two. It's just, help me understand why one gets more by doing less and the other one gets less by doing more?
I understand. I'm going to put our chairperson, Beth Oaks, on the spot for, to follow up on that question.
Good morning. I think we're still morning, right? I'm Beth Oaks. I am the Chair of the Cultural Funding Committee. So to answer your question, it's zero-based budgeting. So the applicants, or I should say, the committee, does not see what somebody received last year. So when we look at the scoring, we start out with an average score. We look at that. We also start out with an average dollar amount that's come as an average of all the applicants or all of the reviewers, and we look at that, and from there, the discussion starts, and that's where you're seeing positive and negative comments. Actually, I would not call them negative. I would call them areas where they could maybe improve. All of the applicants that received funding did good applications. This group is not scared to not fund an application if they don't feel it meets the criteria of the, of the group. So it's not so much as they did better or they did worse than last year. It's what they looked at this year in the competitive group that came in.
So specifically, what was it about Exploration Place that did not get them an increase? Or at least on par with where they had been?
I would say probably the mix of applicants that we had. It would be the, what impacted the most. We had more large organizations, so those dollar amounts are going to be higher. If you look, they got the highest score. They also got the highest amount. It's just the overall pool was not as high as it was before.
Right, but so then it still doesn't answer the question as to why Mark Arts got an increase?
Yeah, I don't have my numbers in front of me.
I know, I'm kind of, we're kind of talking in circles here.
I think they're third or fourth. Again, it's based on the, thank you, it's based on the score. So if you look at the score, Exploration Place got an 88 and received $50,000, the highest amount. Mark Arts, in your example, had an 83.6 and got $41,000. The one in between was the Symphony that also had an 83.7, slightly better score than Mark Arts, also got 41,200. So it's more related to the scores that they received and the dollars that we had available. If you want to increase the budget, we're happy to, to give them all more. But I don't think that's realistic or feasible.
Well, but you did increase the budget and gave one more, even though there were, didn't appear that it was justified. I guess we're just going to agree to disagree on this, but
Probably.
I, I'm just looking for fairness, so that every group that's applying for this understands what the rules are and how they can achieve and be successful.
Everybody is, as, rubrics is utilized for every applicant, and all the reviewers use that same rubrics for their scoring mechanism. So I think it's as, as fair and as transparent. We certainly, it's an open meeting, and that's just how this year's numbers worked out.
Did we have more organizations apply for this relatively same amount of funding this year than last year? Would that account for, I think, some of the concerns that were expressed?
Yes, we had nine new applicants across the board this year, six of which received funding for the first time or who hadn't received funding in, in many years. If I may, one other comment just to keep in mind with all the different variables that come in, into play. What we don't include in the green sheet that the committee does take into consideration is the percentage of eligible ask. So in the large category, I believe they max out at a $75,000 ask based on the percentage of their annual operating budget. One thing that we've seen a great fluctuation on in the last few years is pandemic recovery. So we saw dips in the last few years of what the eligible ask even was. So if you really look through the scoring, there are some organizations that scored really, really high, but they maxed out on what their eligible could, ask could even be. So that's where we, we really don't like to compare apples to oranges, despite them all kind of being within the same pool. But I think the committee does as diplomatic a job as possible in ensuring that the, the funding can go as far and wide as possible.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, you know, I think what Councilmember Frye is pointing out is part of a discussion that we've had for a number of years. This is the process that maybe starts somewhat objectively and then gets, becomes subjective as they drill down deeper into the decision-making process. And there's a lot of give and take. That's why you receive the minutes, so you can get a feel for where people are. But the, because of the concerns that have been expressed in prior years, this is an issue that will be addressed through the strategic plan. And so what may come to you next year, or what comes to you next year may look very different based on the adopted strategic plan and the discussion of priorities and methodology in that document. And that is a work in progress right now, so we can't tell you exactly what that will look like. But I, I, I do, again, this is not the first year we've talked about inconsistencies, what appears on the surface to be inconsistencies in scoring.
Thank you. Further questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there a preference public on this item? See none, we're bringing discussion back to the bench for the discussion on this. Councilmember Toddle.
Thank you. I just want to thank Lindsey and Jesse and all of the cultural arts team. Really appreciate your efforts on this. This is one of the things that I anticipate the most each year. As I've said many times from the bench, I'm a huge supporter of the visual and performing arts, because I have no talent of my own, so I'm grateful for those who will share it with me, and I'm a proud member of the Arts Council Board, so really glad to see this agenda item. Thank you also to the committee, who spent their time investing in this process and making sure that they had a voice and were representative of the community. So Beth, thank you for chairing the committee. You always do a great job, and thanks for all the committee members. I just want to reflect back very quickly. I know we had a long meeting, but I think it's worth mentioning, we do the Arts and Economic Prosperity Study. We just submitted our data for the American for the Arts. We should hopefully get it by the first of the year. Then we're going to do our Arts Means Business Roadshow and get out and let the community know that we have about 100 non-for-profit art organizations within the city of Wichita, and they generate 97, excuse me, $94.7 million annually. That was from the 2017 study, and that's from ticket sales, but also people go out to eat. Maybe they spend the night in a hotel because they're from out of town. They need childcare. They get ice cream on the way home. So art really does mean business in the city of Wichita, and these entities that we're funding help bring quality of life, which help attract and retain talent. So thank you to everyone involved in the process, and congratulations to those that we get to fund.
Why don't you retain a floor for a motion as the board's clear?
Thank you. I would love nothing more. I would enthusiastically motion that the City Council approve the funding allocations recommended for arts and cultural organizations by the Cultural Funding Committee and authorize the necessary signatures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and then seconded. Clerk will open. All members cast their vote.
Aye.
Haven't received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. We've had a request from multiple members to take a break before we jump into the next, next item on the agenda, so if there is no objective or objection, then I'll say that we are on break until five minutes past noon. It's about 20 minutes to grab something to eat and hit the restroom. Is there any objection? If there is none, we are on break until 12:05. Let's do the next item, because I guess we have food coming, lunch. Thank you to Norma from ordering lunch, and I've just been told that food is not here. So let's try to get through the short-term rentals. I'm sure this is going to be a quick one. And, and then we'll, we'll go ahead and have food afterwards.
Lunch will be ready at 12:20, roughly.
12:20.
Roughly.
All right, let's, let's get through the easy stuff. Keep moving. Let's keep it going, guys. What do we got, Scott? Welcome.
Hello. Good, good morning. Scott Wadele from the Planning Department. I'm here with Sharon Dickgraf from the Law Department to present this item. So the recommended action, staff recommends that you adopt the ordinance, which would create the licensing program for short-term rentals in the city of Wichita. Just so everyone's on the same page, short-term rentals are generally considered the practice of renting out a furnished room or furnished home or dwelling unit. Companies with formats that offer this are Airbnb, VRBO, and others. In terms of why this conversation is, is going on now in Wichita, two things have largely brought this conversation forward. The first is that short-term rentals have substantially increased in number with the advent of, with the advent of mobile platforms and online platforms, and combined with it, that this is largely prohibited by the Unified Zoning Code. So as our code, zoning code is currently written, this is largely prohibited. This is because the zoning code does not allow short, allow rental stays less than seven days in most residential, residential zoning districts. The second part of that, and that's really the first part of why this conversation is going on, the second part is that we have received concerns and complaints from residents about short-term rentals. In terms of the conversation, it's one which is really focused on should the city regulate short-term rentals, and if so, what is the right fit for our community? This conversation has been dynamic in many ways because it has touched on so many points of the city of Wichita's mission statement. In terms of process, the community conversation has involved multiple folks and perspectives through multiple meetings and events, extending all the way back to April of 2021 through today. The most recent event in review was by the Planning Commission, who recommended the city adopt the licensing ordinance. That was unanimous vote of 12 to zero. We don't normally have the Planning Commission look at ordinances, but because this is real, closely related to the zoning, they did. We asked them to. One quick note about the process is that following the MAPC meeting, there were revisions made to the licensing program that has been recommended to you. The changes were to reduce the number of violations from three to two during a 12-month period that would result in revocation of the short-term rental license. The reason for this change is because after input and discussion, it is staff's estimation that it is very unlikely that anyone would ever be found to have had three violations in the, in the course of 12 months, simply because of the timeline of that process. So two is feasible, three, we don't feel is feasible. So in terms of the recommended, recommendations, I'll just point out that this is one of three things that you're considering today. So licensing is what we are talking about, and with that, I will turn it over to Sharon to take us through it.
As Scott has indicated, this is the licensing piece. There are three pieces to deal with this particular issue. The ordinance defines a short-term rental as if renting out of a furnished room or home for a period of not less than 28 days. The license requires that all rentals be licensed. Liability insurance of $250,000 is required. That can be obtained by your That can be obtained by your typical insurance company or many of the third-party hosting sites provide that type of insurance. It is required, the property is required to comply with all zoning codes, health and safety codes. Inspections would be based on complaints and are not required to be inspected every year or prior to licensing. Gatherings are limited to two times the maximum overnight occupancy or 20 persons, whichever is less. Overall, occupancy is limited to two adults per bedroom plus additional two adults. Children are not included within that adult definition. Short-term rentals can only be advertised if their property licensed. All licenses, all advertisements must include the license number. Existing short-term rentals have six months to bring the property into compliance. If the property requires either a conditional use or an administrative adjustment, which is what is the next item on the agenda, they have 12 months to complete that process. It is recommended the City Council place the ordinance on first reading and authorize necessary signatures. I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Bluebaugh.
And I know we had a bad issue here a few years ago over Crown Heights. How many other issues have we had since then with short-term rentals?
I'm going to need to defer to JR because I have not been involved in any additional issues.
Welcome.
Good morning. JR Cox, Metropolitan Planning, for the record. Issues of the magnitude that you're speaking of, I'm not aware of any others. I think the, most of the complaints that we receive are simply because the folks know there's a short-term rental in the area, not so much a problem. There's only been one or two others that I can think of where there's been some issue, a parking issue or something like that.
Have we had party issues or?
That I can't answer. That would require a police department response, and I'm not aware of it, but certainly possible.
Do we know of any issues like infringements on neighbors, whether it be vandalism or?
There is one that I do know of where it's a, it's a unique situation. It's an older area, and they have a shared driveway, and it's not a very wide shared driveway, and there have been some issues there.
But other than the one-off issue, we really haven't had a lot of complaints.
That would be correct until that happened, of course, and then there were again because folks know in the area that they're there.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember, if I can clarify that, we had a number of complaints expressed during some of the community meetings, especially the early ones. Now, they were not filed at a time of a problem property, but instead it was complaints that were, that the properties were not the best of neighbors because of trespassing onto property or debris that had been left on, adjacent on a neighbor's property. But those were all out of the meetings, especially the first few meetings that we had after the Crown Heights incident. There were a number of residents that participated primarily from the Crown Heights area and the College Hill area that were on, or in those meetings. Councilmember Johnson, I know, attended those meetings and could talk more about it, but not what I would call someone filing a formal complaint against a property.
Okay, how long ago was that?
Well, that started after, so that's probably 18 months ago when those meetings, when I participated in those meetings.
Because I think normally the servicers, whether it be Airbnb or whoever it is, normally will rate people because of that if they leave the area in bad condition or anything like that.
And I think if staff, I don't know if we did a good enough job of explaining that. We've worked with the industry representatives pretty significantly on this to find a sweet spot. And what I think you'll find from the industry representatives, they believe that what's in the ordinance makes sense because it codifies their own practices, right? And they don't want people who don't follow these practices to be able to basically bring down the industry. So we've not, I think in its current form, I don't know that we've received much pushback from at least those who have been representing what I would call a majority of the owners of short-term rentals.
Right. I guess I'm just looking for more foundation is why we're putting in additional rules and regulations.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. To Councilmember Bluebaugh's question, I regularly see folks on social media who get Airbnbs or short-term rentals for parties. Sometimes I inbox them, but it does continue to happen. And I've also heard from several people, not only in Crown Heights, about the fact that, to your last point, right now, and I think it was said early on, every short-term rental we have in the city of Wichita that operates less than seven days is operating illegally right now per our ordinance. So this actually was taking steps to bring them into compliance and do some good. So that's probably why we're taking those actions and what we had talked about with Crown Heights. My actual question is about suspensions on here. I see that a license may, page 16, a license may be suspended by the zoning administrator for a period not to exceed 30 days if, and it goes through some reasoning. What is the penalty for a second suspension? Is it 30 days as well, or will it increase? Because when you go to the revocation side, it does talk about if you've committed two or more instances, you could have it revoked. So is revocation the second penalty or?
Revocation would be the second penalty.
Okay. That answers my question. Thank you.
All right. Further questions for staff? See none, or open up to the public. We would like to speak to this topic.
Thank you. I'm putting my phone on airplane mode because my kids are blowing up at home, so anyway.
I hope they're okay.
Yeah, they have autism, and blow up can really be a blow up, but they're okay. So anyway, thank you. My name is Trish Heilman. I live at 139 South Fountain. I am involved in the Neighborhood Association of College Hill, and also I'm a board member of WIN, Wichita Independent Neighborhoods. So we really, I'm involved in organizations that really, really care about how we live in our city, and I know that you guys do too. So I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank, thank you guys for having eyes that look up and see things that could be happening in the future, right? Five, 10 years from now. And no, you know that what we do now and the rules that we establish now absolutely are going to impact five, 10 years from now. This is a brand-new business model. I mean, okay, not so brand-new for the world, but pretty brand-new for our area. And we're, I'm very thankful that Scott and his team have worked so hard to build a car that is going to take us into the future. They have put really great rules together, really good structures together. The party house piece, vital, vital. So thank you to Scott and his team. Many of you know me, but you may not know that I came to Wichita to work as a commodity merchant for Cargill. So beyond making money, the biggest job a commodity merchant does is risk management. You have to manage all that risk that you're taking on when you're buying bunches of commodities. And I think that's what you guys do too. You're risk managers for our city, and it's an important function of the City Hall. So you guys, I'm asking you to look at installing some brakes on this vehicle we've built so that you can manage the risk of the future. So every house that becomes an STR is one residence, whether purchased house or rental, that can't be used for residents to live in. That means you're making tighter the rental market and the, for people who live a year in a place, kind of that kind of rental market, and the housing market for people who purchase houses or live in houses. And that, I have seen, my friend is going, trying to buy a house for the last six months, and she keeps being outbid by investor groups that don't have to do inspections. She's a first-time homebuyer. She absolutely has to do an inspection, but she keeps getting outbid, and it's for people who are investing. Sometimes those investors turn their places into STRs because it's a really great model to manage risk in damage to properties and still create income. Many employers in Wichita advertise that this is a great place to live because of cost of living, right? That's how we bring a lot of people from the coasts who are tired of paying 50% of their income in rents and in mortgage. And we don't do that here. 30% is easily doable in Wichita. But if, and rising residential prices are good for current homeowners, for real estate agents, for the city budget, for heaven's sakes, that's good for our budget, but it's not great for people who are trying to buy a house and for people who are trying to keep up with inflation. Our paychecks aren't doing it. So we're all, if you're trying to buy a house and get into Wichita, rising house prices are not helping us to attract great talent. The other thing to think about risk management-wise is STRs and investing in real estate is a market function, right? This is a good place to inflation hedge, to park your money because the stock market's not doing great in all things kind of stuff. So this is right now a marketplace to do it, but what happens when that changes? So then you've got disinvestment going on, you've got wild swings. Wichita's been pretty steady Eddie, and that's a good thing, in my opinion. We're not like the coasts who see 50% valuation swings. That's really tough to do business in, to live in. And so I'm asking you, please, to install some brakes, some strategic brakes in the system, which could look like limiting the percentage of licenses that get given out in any neighborhood, maybe just in the whole city. If you were to do a 3% limit, that would be 12,000 units. We have 700 units right now that are STRs. 12,000 units taken away from actual residents. We've already got a 50,000-unit shortage in housing. Ouch! So even a 3% limit, we're probably not even going to have to use those brakes, but you've got them installed so that you're also communicating to your investors who are looking at our market and saying, hey, there's potential for some brakes here. Don't be surprised by that. That's a risk that they have to understand and are educated to so that if and when we ever should use those brakes, which would, 12,000 units, that's a lot, but would be something that they don't then sue us about because they didn't know about the risk in the first place. So I'm just asking, please, to either send this back to MAPC or use your significant skills on the bench to insert some language that would put brakes on the number of licenses that we can have in each neighborhood. Keep residential neighborhoods residential, not hotel districts, not commercial districts, and help Wichita residents to have still great cost of living. It'll just make it better to live in Wichita altogether. Thank you for your time and consideration, and thank you for considering this very needed set of rules because it's, it's huge. It's, it's great to not have people not functioning illegally, right? We don't want, we want to bring people into the fold and not have them have to function illegally. We also have to recognize when we open those doors, we're going to see a lot more people. I've had quite a few emails personally in the last week from neighbors who are like, I'm looking at this, and that's awesome, great, but we need to know there are quite a few more coming, and let's make sure we're installing those brakes.
Thank you. You're good. Definitely go check in and get a, thank you, Trish, for being here. More, further input in the public? Of course.
Kelly Reed, I live at North Big Country in the west side of Wichita. Happy to be here. Thank you for your allowing us the time. I'm also speaking on behalf of this issue. I would oppose the previous speaker in terms of putting the brakes on. I think this is an issue that we need to have the gas on full throttle. We have been far behind the eight ball when it comes to being able to have regulation and policy around short-term rentals. I am a short-term rental owner. We own four properties in Wichita, one of which is our primary residence. We started with a small 480-square-foot home in 2018 in North Riverside. Yes, I agree that you're going to have more folks who are interested in investing in Wichita, and Wichita's a good city to invest in. That's not a bad thing for our city. I faced a difficult time when trying to find out what the rules and regulations were on having short-term rentals in Wichita. Coming from California in 2016, I understand the rental market, been part of that process there as well, been outbid by a lot of people. It's not just investors who are outbidding. You've got everyday people who have to fight to get a home in some places in the country. There were no policies at all around short-term rentals in 2018 when we bought our home for this purpose. We called the state, we called the county, we called the city. The most that we were able to find out was that there was some things happening at the state level requiring folks to have less, two bedrooms or less, and occupancy taxes, and all those kinds of conversations were just starting to happen in this state, whereas other states and other communities, they have been happening all along. I'm in support fully of having a policy. As I mentioned before, putting the gas on is important. The types of things that we're limited by as owners is not having a zoning code that we can actually come into compliance within, or there's nothing, I would imagine that bed and breakfast type of language that our code currently has probably predates the internet. It's time that we start looking forward, and we do it quickly. We don't want to be out of compliance. We don't want to be breaking the law. I understand that there are reasons why we need to revisit this type of policy at this point. Parties, nuisances, and other things aren't the only issue. I think that we have a lot of people who just don't understand that using a home for residential purposes for someone to stay in is not necessarily a business. If it was, we would be talking, having a completely different conversation. Folks who have corporations and talking about investors coming in, we aren't all big companies coming in to invest. That's not the model that we're looking at here. We're talking about the fastest way for intergenerational wealth to happen is to own properties. I am a very modest person. I don't come from a great means or a lot of money. I've had to work, cashed out investments to make investments here. I don't want to have to move to another community that's more favorable to be able to do that, and I grew up here, so this is, this is my home for sure. I'd like to ask if the council has any questions while I'm using the last minute and a half here of my time, of me, in terms of questions for short-term rental owners or hosts that you might have so that this type of ordinance can pass, again, here today at this council.
So with that, I do have two people on the board. I'm not sure if they're on for questions, so I'm just going to kind of glance, and if no one's looking up at me, are you on for questions? No? Yes?
Yep.
All right, so I will start with Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate you being here and your comments today. I absolutely agree with you. We need to modernize our licensing, our codes, to make sure that this type of business practice is legal here in Wichita. My question to you, though, in your experience, have you seen anywhere that you've looked at, two-part question, have you seen any limits on short-term rentals in neighborhoods? And two, how would you feel about that if there were?
Coming from California, there's all kinds of limitations on short-term rentals. I understand the housing market is the biggest reason, and protecting affordable housing is an important discussion that I think you all need to be having when you're making this final decision. I have not personally been involved in any type of limitation like that, but I wouldn't be opposed to it. I think that it would be a valuable discussion to have, again, having some limitations in neighborhoods, having limitations even for the number of owners who are coming in and sweeping up properties if maintaining housing value is what's, is really an important piece for our city to do. I wouldn't be opposed to it. I think there are probably close to 600 or more short-term rentals operating here now. I would say some discussion around how do we protect those folks who have been, who have been on the up and up and trying to do things in a legal manner would be a good discussion point as well.
Awesome. I appreciate that, and I was asking more, or less on the side of affordable housing, more on the side of just protecting the sanctity of a neighborhood. You know, we have, like in Lambsdale, there's, and this is different, but there's five group homes kind of centered in one area, and it kind of takes over a block in parts of a neighborhood. And so I asked you because that's something I'd love to see with short-term rentals, to make sure we don't have a short-term rental neighborhood. You know, neighborhoods can still stay intact, but also allow some people to have this opportunity.
Sure. I wouldn't be opposed to that. I mean, I don't want my neighbors coming and going. I don't want to have a lot, I don't want to have that type of activity necessarily either, but one of our short-term rentals is right next door to our primary residence. I would say, you know, there are some discussion points that have happened about, I don't know this person, who's coming and going. That can happen anywhere. That can happen in any home. People could have parties in any home. There could be nuisances that impact the quality of life in a neighborhood. I think that the people that we're trying to attract to our city and the type of city that we're trying to create, we need this type of option for folks to come and stay. The people that come and stay aren't always the ones who are being portrayed right now when we're, well, right now, I mean, the last four or five years we've been having this conversation. We've got folks coming in for work. We've got folks coming in that are looking to We've got folks coming in that are looking to move to this city, who are here for interviews, who are here performing jobs, they're here for conferences. They're contributing to our city in other ways. I don't see that as being detrimental to a neighborhood environment or a neighborhood feel. I don't see it being detrimental to have someone new next door that you talk to that might be from another city. I don't see that as being a detriment to the neighborhood. If you have a whole block of people that are eating up 10 or 20 or 30 homes all in the same place, at least they're all in one space in a way. I wouldn't be opposed to it. I would say to do so, proceed with caution perhaps in terms of who's already there, how many that you want to allow in a neighborhood, and make sure that, you know, all the voices are heard from different stakeholders. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, appreciate it.
Councilmember Booba.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you coming in here today and sharing it from an owner's perspective. Do you see a lot of parties at your properties?
No, we don't. In terms of mitigating risk, we have a lot of rules in our own personal properties that folks have to abide by when they rent from us. Limitation on the number of guests that you have, a limitation on the number of cars that can be allowed at the property. And we enforce that as owners. We don't want our properties to, you know, fall under the guise of a big party house or anything like that. So once we had a wedding, that, folks that were there for a wedding, and they had a wedding rehearsal kind of dinner or something, and we saw a catering truck pull up and immediately went and knocked on the door and said, this isn't something that's allowed. This is a neighborhood, you know, you can't be hosting something like this. And they dispersed. Other than that, we haven't had personally any issues of parties or nuisances. We, every immediate owner around our property has written a letter or come in. We're also governed by an HOA, so they came in to be in support of us having this property. It's been there since 2019. We haven't had any issues. We've been operating since then next door to our primary residence.
No neighbor complaints of littering and trash, urinating in the lawn, anything like that?
Nothing like that, no.
Okay. Actually, our next agenda item is going to be pertaining to nuisance parties. And you're saying there's not a lot of nuisance parties, but the expectation is going to be for the owner to make sure that doesn't happen. So do you drive by these properties? Do you monitor them whenever they're being rented?
Yeah. My apologies. In terms of risks, we have security cameras at all of the properties, and that's just for our own safety and ability to manage the risk of what's going on at the property. One of our properties has a pool. We have additional insurance on that property because of that. Yeah, we certainly do monitor the activities and the behaviors that are going on at the property. If there's ever a concern, we address it, as I mentioned, with the wedding incident that we had to go knock on the door.
So if there was a party, how comfortable would you be going and breaking up the party?
I would 100% go knock on a door. I'm the door knocker. So yeah, I have no problem knocking on the door. Live next door to a sheriff. They, you know, would come over anytime if we had asked. And I'm sure that our city response units would be responsive as well if there was some type of nuisance that was disturbing the neighborhood. But really, this falls on the host. This falls on the owner to make sure that you're not allowing folks to come in, that you're mitigating your own risks. And I think that starts with education, too. I think as part of this conversation, some type of educational format for new hosts in particular to be able to learn from a community of other hosts on how to do these types of properties successfully and still maintain the integrity of the neighborhood.
Do you talk to other owners here in Wichita?
Yes. I'm actually the community host for the state of Kansas for Airbnb, and so we have a host community online, and we come together in person occasionally as well.
Is the party thing a widespread problem, or?
It's a problem for some people, and it has become a bigger problem since this discussion has happened, since the Crown Heights issue happened, in terms of other neighbors who are calling in a violation of short-term rental hosts because the seven-day stay limit is in place. And again, dating back to bed and breakfast type of style business models.
And I think that's what staff was kind of alluding to as well.
Yeah. So and I appreciate the work. I mean, the work and all the public comment and all the, the folks that have made this topic available to the public and be able to come and speak. It's really an important issue. I'm really glad that you all are talking about it and highly recommend that you move forward with some type of regulatory change that would bring about compliance for the hundreds and hundreds of owners and operators like me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No further questions. Thank you.
To you, I appreciate it.
Further input from the public on this item? See none. All right. We'll bring discussion back to the bench, further discussion about this item. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Sharon, I was waiting, but wanted to know if we were looking at some forms of limits. Would that be a licensing item or a zoning item?
That would be a zoning item. Scott and I have talked about what that would look like. I think we've come to the conclusion that it would look like a protective overlay for a particular neighborhood. So if, and we would have to figure out what the definition of a neighborhood is. I mean, in some developments, it's pretty easy. I have Deer Trail, I have Garden Estates. So those are homeowners associations, but you have to figure out what your neighborhood is, and then you would have some sort of a protective overlay that could limit the number that are in a particular area or neighborhood. And I'll defer to Scott if he had any other comments. I think we both agree that the preferred option would be to do it by zoning. You could have a limitation in your licensing code. I think that's much more difficult to enforce, frankly, because how the oversight of licensing is set up as opposed to the oversight of zoning.
I'll keep the remainder of my comments until the zoning item.
Okay.
Further discussion? All right, there's no further discussion. I do know that Councilmember Johnson has worked diligently on this policy, and therefore I'll default the floor to Councilmember Johnson for a possible motion.
Thanks, Mayor. I would move that the City Council place the ordinance on first reading and authorize the necessary signatures.
I will second that motion. Let's ask the clerk to open her roll. Members have cast their vote.
Aye.
I have received six yea votes to one no vote. That motion does pass at this point. I think we will go. We're going to take a break if there's no objection. We'll come back here about 20 minutes. We will come back about 12:35. So back in the chamber at 12:35. Let folks get a, get a short break. Thank you.
An ordinance creating Chapter 5.08 of the Code of the City of Wichita, Kansas pertaining to nuisance parties.
Good afternoon. Sharon Dickraff for this law department is going to present this item this afternoon. During the discussions on how to regulate short-term rentals, research was completed on how other cities deal with nuisance-type properties parties. And one solution was, and this is from Overland Park, an ordinance that would address residential locations that host parties which are then a nuisance to the neighborhood. This ordinance would apply to all residential property, not just short-term rentals. The ordinance defines a nuisance party as a gathering of five or more people when one or more of these nuisance-type activities occur: unlawful sailor consumption of alcohol, noise violations, property damage, littering, urinating in public, trespassing, indecent exposure, setting off fireworks, et cetera. Those are typically the types of violations that we see or that neighborhoods complain about when nuisance parties are held at residential properties. Law enforcement may ask that the parties cease and participants disperse. If individuals don't disperse, a citation may be issued to the property owner and/or the person in control of the property at the time. The ordinance does not replace the existing chronic nuisance ordinance, which the police department use under Title VIII to deal with properties that have chronic issues and repeat violence or repeat nuisance issues. If the offender, again, that can be the owner or the person in charge of the property, is convicted, there can be a fine between $250 to $2,500 and/or one year in jail. And it's recommended that the city council place the amendments on first reading and authorize all necessary signatures. And I will stand for any questions.
All right. Questions for staff? We'll start with Councilmember Booba.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you tell me where the origination from this ordinance came?
This was a part of the discussions on how we regulate short-term rentals. This is not being pushed by the police department or any individual department. The committee that was working on the short-term rental thought that this was an additional tool that could be used both for short-term rentals and other residential properties.
Who thought that?
The group of staff that were working on this project.
Who was that? Who was on the staff? What side of that?
Would have been myself and Scott Wagle.
So you want to encompass the whole city, every residential property off of the short-term rentals, correct?
That's an option for the council. It's not what I want. It's one of the best practices that we saw when we researched this issue.
Have we went out to dabs or went out to the public or talked to any landlord organizations or anything like that? I mean, it doesn't sound like we're being very transparent about this.
This was talked about numerous times as part of the MAPC process, even though it didn't necessarily have to. I don't know that we engaged any landlord or tenant organizations regarding this particular piece. I would have to ask Scott whether that was part of the pieces that went out to the dabs.
It did.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I would just highlight that, yes, this was one of the three elements that did go out to the dabs. It was also included as part of the MAPC discussions. We included copies of the proposed ordinance.
So it was clear that this was all residences?
I believe so.
Because your city manager didn't know it until right before the meeting.
Yes, sir.
Because I was texting him last night during our meeting and asking him. And he said, no, it's not all residents. So if it wasn't clear to the city manager, how was it clear to the rest of the public? I mean, how does this affect Wichita public housing? Are we going to charge the city of Wichita if somebody has a party at one of our properties?
It would apply to all residences.
I just think maybe we ought to take a step back instead of just throwing in the whole city on the short-term rentals instead of, I just, I think it's a, it sounded like a great overreach by your department.
Councilmember Frye?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess it would help to define residential property. Does that mean every property that is owned by an individual or every residential property, like apartment complexes, as the council member said, city-owned housing? Who's responsible then? And then finally, because we did change our fireworks ordinance this year and allowed fireworks to be shot on certain days, when one of the nuisances setting off fireworks, we'd have to adjust that language as well.
The fireworks piece was, came from it, from the existing nuisance party ordinance from Overland Park. And we drafted it, I drafted it, to basically mirror that type of a nuisance ordinance. Residential premises is not defined by the ordinance. Generally, we would consider a residential premise to be someone who is residing in a dwelling unit, so it would be the individual apartment owner or the person in control of the property. Because it reads that any owner or person having the right of possession of any residential premises. So if I'm the tenant and I'm having a party, I can be cited as the tenant or the owner of the property can be cited for these types of violations.
That's not in this ordinance.
Yes, it is. Section two, on page two.
There it is. Okay.
Yes, so it's the tenant and/or the landlord. And the owner is put in there because I may own the property, I may rent the property, I may be leasing the property, it may be a short-term rental. And again, if the will of the council is that these should not be imposed at all, it doesn't need to be passed, these can also be tailored just to short-term rentals. My recommendation that those types of actions be placed as a separate section in your licensing ordinance, not as a standalone ordinance. This is a standalone ordinance because it references both residential and short-term rentals.
Councilmember Booba?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I guess the "and/or" really gets me because you said yourself, it's the person who is in charge of the property.
Yes.
If a landlord rents a property or the city of Wichita rents a property, how can they monitor? How can they be expected to oversee fireworks, urination, litter, trash? I mean, what rights, what rights do they have? What rights does the city have as a landlord to come onto those properties and break up parties and break up things like that? I just...
I would say your police have the option to go on property to investigate a crime, And they have the opportunity to go on property, whether it's residential landlord owner or owner occupied. So I don't know that that argument has a lot of pull with me. Now, do we cite the owner or do we cite the tenant? Again, that's a policy issue. If you want this just to apply to the person who's in charge of the property, that can be easily done.
I mean, that's what you've drafted. That's what you're recommending.
We're drafting any owner or person having the right of possession for the property.
So I'm trying to better understand what that looks like in reality. You said the argument doesn't weigh well with you. How would the police know? How would they know that there was a party going on? The police aren't going over there. We're checking all these rentals that the city of Wichita has.
No, you're right. I mean, these cases...
It's just not possible. It's not, it's not very realistic.
These cases are going to arise from a neighborhood complaint. My neighbor has a party. It's a graduation party. There's 33 kids in the lawn. They're urinating in public. I can't get my car out of the driveway. Those are the types of situations that the police are going to get involved and that this ordinance would come into play. And you're completely right. Most of these are going to be complaint-driven. Police are not going to drive around town to look for these types of violations. It's going to be an additional tool, however, when the police get those calls at 1:00 in the morning and I can't get my car out and somebody just urinated in my bush.
So this just seems like another layer of adding more bureaucracy and making our cost of living higher and higher here in the city of Wichita. It's hard to get affordable housing the way it is. And now we want to lay out an ordinance that's going to have this expectation that property owners that rent their property are in charge of making sure there's no parties, there's no fireworks, there's nothing going out of line. Just because they rent a property, that doesn't mean that they should have to babysit the property. I think it comes back to what you said again. Who is in charge of the property? That's the occupant. That's the person that's renting it or that owns the property. You can't expect an absentee property owner or management company or even the city of Wichita to be responsible for anything that happens in that house.
And I don't believe that the ordinance does that. By allowing...
It says "and/or."
It says "or." The ordinance actually says "or." Any owner or person having the right of possession.
Okay, so you can skip the person that's renting the property and just go to the landowner or the homeowner or the person that owns the property and charge them, I guess?
I think you would have to show some sort of... I'm just trying to think about the best way to answer this. The police are going to cite who's there and who's in control of the party nine times out of 10. I think the owner would come involved if you're looking at multiple locations at the same incident where the owner should have know that this is being used as a party house. And whether that's a short-term rental or a resident, I think that's a policy decision for the city council.
Maybe we should add that language if that's what the expectation is, instead of leaving it up to interpretation.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. Sharon, to the point that my colleague made, it actually sounds like the nuisance ordinance the police already use, where if they get involved too many times, you cite the property owner, who then could either pass down costs or kind of deal with the nuisance in the neighborhood. So to me, the foundation for that is set. And I don't have too much concern at the moment. I'm still thinking about this because I know several property managers that actually do the right thing in the city, and they actually do control what goes on on the property. And if they know someone's not following the rules, they make sure they get out. And they have all of that outlined for them. So at the moment, I just wanted to make sure I was right on the foundation being set on the other nuisance ordinance that law enforcement has. So it does already have that standard. And then I'll keep thinking on this. Again, nothing really jumps off. I have had concerns expressed to me from some neighbors, and especially around those impact meetings that we have, when they know there's a particular house that someone's renting, and they know that certain activities are going on, and law enforcement may not always have the tools to address it, and then something bad does happen. So I think this is probably trying to go in that direction to address some of that. But I also agree with Councilmember Frye on the fireworks piece. If we allow that, maybe some adjustment or wording on any of that usage outside of the specified timeframe that we have as a city.
Councilmember Tuttle?
Thank you. And I'm not ready to make any kind of motion or recommendation for this, but I'm hearing some angst from my colleagues, some really good questions. I've heard about the fireworks. Councilmember Bluebaw brought up some good questions. And then the fact that it hasn't gone out to maybe like landlord or renters groups. We usually do that, and that kind of always makes things a little bit more robust. Again, I don't know what the will of this body will be, but it would be an interesting thought maybe to just take a little bit more time and be a little bit more intentional in gathering feedback and information so that we don't, the unintended consequences that the landlord is potentially harmed when it shouldn't be. It should be the people who are occupying the facility. So if, you know, if we decide to move in the direction of maybe taking just a little bit more time to be intentional and deliberate and make sure we get that right, I would probably be supportive of that.
There is no time limitation on this particular ordinance.
That's exactly right, too.
The zoning and the licensing really do...
They're separate.
Yeah, but they kind of need to go together because they're tied together. This one, doesn't matter if you defer it or if you just vote not to do it.
Okay. Well, I'd be interested to hear from the rest of my colleagues. But I appreciate the work that's gone into it, and I think it's certainly an interesting discussion. But if we're going to do it, just like always, we try and strive for doing it right and getting it right the first time. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, when, and I apologize to staff that I misinterpreted what was being presented. This was always in the context of the discussion about short-term rentals. So I thought we were dealing with regulation on nuisance properties that were short-term rentals. It would be helpful to get the council's intent, if at all possible today. Do you want us to confine our thoughts to short-term rentals, or do you want it to be broader, as is allowed under this ordinance, which would be residential units, which would be single-family as well as rental units, if I understand? So if that's possible to give us that guidance, that would allow us, if this is going to be delayed, for us to be able to get the appropriate scope.
I mean, I think that, to be honest, we might have to pump the brakes on this just so we can make everyone feel good moving forward with it, particularly since it's not vital. I think if I was just to put on a policy hat for a moment, what if it's both? You know, what if I own my short-term rental property, but I'm on site, and now you can have a party at my place because I'm the owner, and I come out and say, I'm the owner of this property, get out of here. But short-term rental next to me can't offer that. I mean, there's a lot of, I think, if we start carving out, I guess, certain things, or if we're too targeted, we run into issues. So, and again, it sounds like if, I was going to say, normally I don't see folks up here as animated as we've seen, not just with this, but today. And I think that that energy is, I'm still feeling that, which makes me personally in support of possibly delaying this and going around to our colleagues, chatting about what is, what is the goal? What do we want to see? What was considered overreach? Because I would love a 7-0 vote on something like this, or basically on everything, if we can get there. And it sounds like some of the issues being discussed, they seem like workable ones. They seem technical. They seem like stuff we could probably work through. I think Shannon's doing an incredible job presenting this the best you can. But I also think that there might be some opportunities to clean this up. So I think moving forward, to answer your question, yeah, I think we should be putting some direction more towards what we want to see out of this. There's some confusion coming to the bench. I'm not sure if we can get that today, but I know that we could get that over the next few days. So with that, Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. To answer your question, I think I'm supportive of deferring and going out to DAB. I would like to look at both, because I hear about both, so short-term rental and everything else. Questions answered to Councilmember Frye's point, what does that look like for us as a city and property owner at the moment? Because we still do have some folks in housing. And then getting public feedback on all of this. I think, again, it's a step in a direction of trying to address those issues. And also, I'd love to hear from WPD. I know I hear from the CP officers and folks all the time, but just an opinion on how this could address some of what they've been seeing over the years.
And just, I do want to go out to public. I'm not sure who's here still who wants to speak to this item. But if you're someone who made it through this entire meeting because you want to talk to this item, I want to make sure you have that opportunity. It does sound like, once we get back into discussion at the bench, it does sound like there is support to possibly slow this down and to ensure that our first step forward is a strong step, that we're making more people happy than not. So with that, I will open it up to the public. Does anyone here wish to speak to this item? All right. See none. Now we're back on the bench for discussion. And again, we've had a long morning. And I think that, you know, we could sit here and hammer this out. But I do think that because it's not pressing, because it's not budgetary, because it is somewhat concerning that it can be misread or misinterpreted. I love the idea that Councilmember Tuttle had of sending this out to the DABs. And at the very least, even if we don't make much changes, at least we can get the information of what this is trying to do out there, so we can gauge that feedback. So with that, I'll make a motion to, legal, maybe you can help me with this. I don't want to table it. And I'm not sure if we should have a hard date for it to come back. Can we make a motion to pass over, or what would be the best way?
City ordinances prefer that you make a motion to defer to a date certain. That's what the ordinance recommends, specifies. It doesn't really allow for a deferral to an open-ended date. So I would suggest a controlled date in your motion.
When do we want to come back for? Because if not, I'm going to defer for three years. Taking up a lot of time. No, I'm kidding. Johnson, what are you thinking? Councilmember Tuttle, or folks who have DABs and DAB schedules coming up? What are we thinking? Because as a mayor, I don't have a DAB. I rely on you all, so I want to make sure that we're going to have this at a date that makes sense. So Councilmember Tuttle?
Thank you. To get to DABs, I think would take a little bit of time. And then also, if we wanted to have any rental associations or landlord associations, I'm not sure exactly, you know, how often they meet. So maybe in December, I think would be appropriate. And that way, this body still have, will have the input since we've been working on it. That's just my thought.
Could we do the second week of December? Does that, that's before the holidays, and that's, I'm coming back early September for a trip to Korea. So I don't want to miss this if it's going to be as fun as it's been so far. So I'm looking at Bob. He looks like he's thinking. But I'm wondering, are you thinking about what that second week date is?
Mayor, that would be December 12. I'm just double-checking to make sure that there's not, I think that's, I don't believe there's a National League of Cities conflict. Is, okay, great. No, we should be fine then. December 12.
Do we have National League of Cities in November? Okay. So I'll make a motion to delay this, this item number seven, an ordinance creating Chapter 5.08 of the Code of the City of Wichita, Kansas, pertaining to nuanced nuisance parties to December 12, so that we have more time to work on this and to publicize it. So a second?
Second.
Worried for a second there. All right, motion's been made in a second. However, Councilmember Johnson is on the board to speak to the motion. And Councilmember, go.
Thanks, Mayor. My request is not the District One Advisory Board for next month, because we already have six zoning items. So November.
Six items. Okay. So with that, motion's been made in a second. Is there any discussion on a motion? If there's no discussion, it's a motion to take this item and put it on the December 12 agenda. Clerk will open the voting thing. Councilmember Ballard, are you with us?
Yes.
How would you vote? Yes or yea or nay on delaying this item until December 12?
Yea.
Yea. Councilmember Vice Mayor Hoheisel, are you still with us?
Yes. Yea.
God bless you, Mike. Have received seven yea votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
DER 2023-06, Short-Term Rental Unified Zoning Code Changes.
All right. Let's keep going.
All right. Good afternoon. Scott Wedle from the Planning Department. So for this item, there are two recommended actions. The first one, because this is zoning-related, that you would suspend Council Policy Number Nine in order to allow for public comment as part of this process. And then action number two is that you would adopt the recommended amendments to the Unified Zoning Code and the related actions. We've gone through what short-term rentals are. We've talked about really the context in which this conversation came up and continues to be discussed. We've talked about the relationship to, you know, so many aspects of Wichita and quality of life and economic impacts. In terms of process, we've talked about the schedule, going back to 2021 and the various events that have taken place to collect input and feedback since then. And so this is an opportunity to focus on the Unified Zoning Code changes. So the zoning code changes would be just for the city of Wichita. And whether the use of the properties for short-term rentals, whether it could be used by right, or whether it would require zoning action, would depend on what the current zoning is and whether or not it's owner-occupied. Through conversations, we've heard from the public that owner-occupied is a significant distinction for folks. So this change would apply to five out of 21 zoning districts, so the five most common residential zoning districts in the city of Wichita, with the most common being SF5 and TF3. So if you are located, you have a property within one of those five zoning districts. And if it is owner-occupied, then it would be, you could operate a short-term rental by right, assuming that you get licensing and code inspections and that you're in compliance with codes, I should say. Now, if you are in one of those five zoning districts and you, it is not owner-occupied, then you would have to apply for zoning action, in this case, an administrative permit. That would be the first step. In terms of the definitions, the zoning code change would add the definition for short-term rentals. It would be defined, short-term rental would have stays of less than 28 days. It would include bed and breakfast. We would wrap that into it. It would not include group residence. That has been a concern that has come up at some of the meetings. So we want to make sure that that's very clear, that it does not include that. Nor is it included or wrapped into hotel motel. So we're not proposing that hotel and motels, as we know, like Days Inn or whatever, would operate in residential areas. It would not permit recreational vehicles to be used for short-term rentals. They would have to be licensed with the city, which was discussed earlier. They would have to be in compliance with codes. Now, a code inspection would not be required as part of this. But again, as part of the licensing process, if there was a complaint, then there would be the opportunity for inspection. In terms of the administrative permit, administrative permit is something that is already in the zoning code. We currently use it for some of the wireless communication towers. Otherwise, it is not used very often. So we would use that. It can be approved administratively, so it does not need to go to the DAB or to the MAPC. In this case, what we're trying to do is separate the potentially controversial cases from the ones that are likely to not be controversial. And that's by using this process. So a notice letter would be sent out to the owners of abutting and contiguous land. There would be a 14-day protest period. If more than 50% of the owners of the adjacent and contiguous properties submit a protest, then the case would convert to becoming a conditional use case, and would go through the standard process of DAB, MAPC, the notifications, et cetera. Here's an example of that. In this case, the property that's in the orange-yellowish color is the one that is applying for the short-term rental. And this is not in reality. This is just an example. And you can see that the properties outlined in blue are the ones that are considered to be adjacent and contiguous. So they are the ones that would receive the notice. In terms of ownership, ownership is the same as for any other zoning case in terms of a protest, that if there are two owners of record for a property, both owners would need to sign the protest in order for the protest to be considered valid and would be considered one owner, because they are considered an owner of a property together. Here's an example. This is a church. The church owns three properties, three separate parcels. For the purpose of this, for the short-term rentals and administrative permit, they would be considered one owner. So although there are three properties, and some of them are larger than their neighbors, they would be considered one property for the purpose of this. they would be considered one property for the purpose of this. So that is, in essence, the zoning changes. Again, the recommended action is to, number one, take the action to suspend Council Policy Number Nine in order to accept public comment, and number two is to adopt the recommended amendments. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
All right, questions for staff. Councilmember Blueba.
Is this zoning change necessary for the ordinance we passed earlier?
It is not necessary for the ordinance you passed earlier.
This is just additional?
However, I would say that in order to get a license, the properties need to be in compliance with zoning. And I would venture to say there are very few short-term rentals in Wichita today that are in compliance with the zoning, unless they're renting for seven days or more, because the majority of them, I believe, are in residential districts where they have to do that, they have to have stays of seven days or more.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Two questions, Scott.
Yes, sir.
First is, you said for the valid protest of someone, if there was more than one owner on record, they both would have to sign. Are there any allowances if one of those owners or all of them except one is deceased, but they've not updated their property records yet?
Yeah, we, that is a, it's an interesting question.
We're MetaStaff.
It has come up before, and each of those is really special circumstances, so we would have to look into it on a case-by-case basis. But in general, we would look to see who the owners of record are and whether or not those signatures match up with those individuals. But in that instance, we would, there would be some, definitely some legal consultation on that one.
Okay, but is that something that you could do in-house without counsel, like putting that into an ordinance, just have a policy with? I would just hate to see something tragic happen to someone, but there's something coming that they really don't want, but because this person is now deceased and they sign it, and per our law, it's not valid because that other person can't sign.
Yes. Okay. In that instance, yeah, they would have to provide proof that someone has passed or is deceased, and then that would allow us to be in a defensible position should we get challenged on the action by the city.
Okay. And then my other question that I was waiting on from earlier. So being that limits would have to be placed into zoning, and I know we're not there today, where did those conversations kind of stop? I know that we, when it came to DAB, there was a conversation around a six or 800-foot radius. At DAB1, there was actually someone there who had recommended something better, which was looking at the actual block, which is way much more work for staff, but looking at the block, no matter the shape, and trying to say one or two on that block. Kind of where did that stop?
Sure. There's been quite a bit of dialogue about that one, and really, I think what kicked off a lot of that was the discussion, even at the city council level, at the workshop, when we talked about the distance separation. We went out to the DABs. We received mixed feedback on that, but I would say that the majority of folks who commented on it actually were not in favor, but I believe that that's also because we had people who were traveling from meeting to meeting as well, attend more than one meeting. But, so it was kind of, it was a mixed discussion. We had received feedback that that was going to be challenging, that it was, probably met the best needs of the city not to have that. So we had removed that, and that's how we've proceeded forward with the conversation. You certainly have the opportunity to add that today if you want, but what I would highlight is there's challenges with any, as has been commented, there can be challenges with legislation or regulations that apply citywide. An option also would be to do, as was highlighted earlier today, an overlay district for a particular area or sub-area of the city of Wichita. And in that, in that zoning, you could apply or have a distant separation standard for short-term rentals.
Who has to initiate that?
I, from my position as the planning director and in talking with other staff, really, I think the preference is for the neighborhood to initiate that, either by speaking with elected officials or, you know, some other way to provide an indication that they are supportive and want to look at that. And then we would take the process to have a larger kind of get-together with those residents in that area to determine if that truly is representative of that group and what they would like to do. Because what I don't want to do is come in and impose something that they're not supportive of.
Okay, so just continuing down that path, because I do want to help every neighborhood that said this to me. Would that be me going to a neighborhood association meeting and outlining that you would need a protective overlay over the neighborhood? That would have those separation distances? And then would that then be a petition that they need to go door-to-door to highlight, to show proof that the majority wants that?
No. What I would suggest is that if you feel like there's support there, that it would be something that we would have to talk about in terms of resources and getting the resources out there to create and work with them on determining if an overlay is in fact appropriate, and then what should be included in that overlay. We have asked for, and were fortunate to receive funding, to do the College Hill Neighborhood Plan. I would envision a process maybe similar to that, although possibly even more streamlined than that process to specifically address this issue.
And that was my next question. So that, that was a significant chunk of change to do that. And if, there's about five neighborhoods I'm thinking of, so would they, would it be, when you say streamlined, is there a larger cost to that? Or is it more process-driven paper that we could then submit, ends up being an item for discussion?
I would venture to say that once we have a model that we feel is a good fit and that works well, that then it's a matter of taking that and exploring that with a particular neighborhood that's asking for it, seeing if that's a good fit, and then duplicating it. So I envision that we could do it for a streamlined process and at lower cost, because, again, we're taking something that already exists and expanding it into a newer geography.
Okay. I would love to see what that looks like, even just looking at these numbers. Short-term rentals continue to increase, and I am really concerned about neighborhoods being taken over by those. And I've had a few neighborhood presidents reach out to me, so if we, whenever we figure that piece out, I'd love to talk more about that and then see how we can engage those neighborhoods.
Further questions for staff? None? See none? Yep. Public input on this item? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommended action to suspend Council Policy Number Nine and allow public comment on this item. Adopt the recommended amendments to the Unified Zoning Code. Place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on second reading, which require four of seven votes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Johnson. With that, we'll ask the clerk to open the roll. Members shall cast their votes, and we will ask those who are joining us virtually to also cast a vote by roll call. So Councilmember Ballard. Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
Yea.
Back to Councilmember Ballard. Are you with us?
Yes.
By result of five yea votes to six yes votes to one nay, that motion does pass. Let the record show that Councilmember Ballard is a yes. Madam Clerk.
PUD 2023-7, zone change requests in the city from SF5 Single Family Residential District to PUD Planned Unit Development to permit development of athletic fields associated with the Northwest YMCA, generally located on the south side of West 21st Street North within one-half mile of North 135th Street West.
Just a reminder, a motion or adjournment is always in order. Welcome back.
Hello, Scott Wadel again from the Planning Department. In this case, the applicant is requesting rezone the property, as you heard, from SF5 to PUD, Planned Unit Development, which is custom zoning. This is being heard for two reasons. The first is that the District Advisory Board and the Planning Commission's recommendations for approval have different conditions. So that's the first reason. The second reason is because a protest was submitted against the application. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated that they are requesting a rezoning in order to allow for the property to be used as multiple athletic fields to accommodate various recreation programs offered by the Y. About the site, the site is generally located in south and west of the intersection of 21st and 135th. You can see it here on the map. It's made up of five parcels, approximately 26 acres in size, and currently in use for agricultural purposes. In terms of context, properties to the north are zoned SF20 Single Family and developed with single-family dwelling and agricultural land in unincorporated Cedric County and LC Limited Commercial District with a CUP and developed as a Northwest YMCA and associated fields. Properties to the east are zoned SF20 in unincorporated Cedric County and developed with a church. Properties to the south are zoned SF5 Single Family Residential and are in the city of Wichita and developed with single-family homes. Properties to the west are zoned SF20 in unincorporated Cedric County and developed with single-family dwellings. The staff report includes a number of items. It discusses land uses, hours of operation, noise, lighting, setbacks, and building heights, signage, parking, and sidewalk screening and landscaping. I'm not going to review all of that, I just note that it's there. In terms of review, on August 7th, the DAB recommended approval, eight to one of the applications subject to conditions that are identified in the staff report. Several members of the public spoke on the application with concerns about noise, lighting, traffic, impacts to property values. On August 10th, the Planning Commission recommended approval, nine to one to one. Subject to the conditions identified in the staff report, these conditions differed from the DAB recommendations in the following ways, and that was regarding hours of operation, locations of office/retail uses, setbacks, building heights, and lighting. Again, several members of the public were in attendance and spoke on the item at that public hearing. One protest was received in opposition to the application. It totaled less than 1% of the protest area, did not meet the state threshold of 20%, so therefore, this request can be approved by a simple majority. Council actions recommend the city council adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the requested zone change. Place the ordinance on the first reading. Authorize the necessary signatures. Instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance on second reading. This would require, again, four of seven votes. Alternatives include overriding the MAPC, adopting alternative findings, and approving the zone change subject to the DAB recommendation. That would require five of seven votes, because it's an override. You can also override the MAPC and deny the request, or as always, you can return it to the MAPC for additional consideration, four of seven votes. So with that, I'll take you through some of the slides here. So here's the aerial. You can see it outlined in the aqua color. The purple color is actually the city boundaries, so areas to the west of that are in unincorporated Cedric County. Here's the zoning map. You described it earlier, so here you can see it. This is from the comp plan, showing that the area is recommended for new residential and employment. Here's the graphic that was submitted with the PUD application. Here's the protest map. The protest occurred at the south and east corner of the property. Here are photos from the site and the surrounding area. And with that, I will stand for any questions. Thank you.
Questions for staff? See none? No one from the public on this item? Is there further discussion? If there's no further discussion, and Chair recognizes the Honorable Brian Fry for discussion and a possible motion, as this resides in District Five.
Thank you, Mayor. This has been a several weeks' project, not only between the neighborhood, but also the applicant. It's a great and worthwhile project for Northwest Wichita, looking forward to the investment from the YMCA. Meeting with both applicant and residents, and the difference between MAPC and DAB, we worked up a compromise. So with that, I offer a motion that I move to override the MAPC and approve the requested zoning change as recommended by the MAPC with the following changes. Retail general, automated teller machine, event center in the city, personal care services, personal improvement services, and teen club in the city are permitted uses, provided such uses are located within the north 350 feet of Parcel 1. The building setbacks for Parcel 1 shall be 35 feet on the north. The maximum building height on Parcel 1 shall be 45 feet. And Parcel 1 shall be required to have two entrances and exits onto 21st Street, subject to the applicable access management standards. In support of this motion, I offer the following findings. The approval with changes will help reduce possible detrimental effects to nearby properties. And again, this is a blend of the MAPC recommendation and DAB.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Have a substitute motion? No, just kidding. To speak to the motion, Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Can you repeat that? No, I'm like.
And iambic pentameter? Would that be helpful?
As long as the clerk got it, I think we're good. Just point of information, as this is a original motion, is this a five of seven? Or is this a four, seven? Five of seven? Five. Thank you. If there's no further discussion, a motion has been made. Clerk will open up the roll. Members will cast their vote by roll call. We will call on Councilmember Ballard, yea or nay on the motion?
Yea.
Vice Mayor Hoheisel, yea or nay on the motion?
Yea.
Have received seven yea votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
ZON 2023-43, zone change in the city from B Multi-Family District to LC Limited Commercial District to allow commercial uses, generally located on the northeast corner of May Avenue and Dodge Avenue, 1222 West May Avenue.
Good afternoon, Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. The applicant has requested a rezone of the property, as you heard, from B Multi-Family to LC Limited Commercial. This item is being heard because the District Advisory Board and Planning Commission recommendations are different. The DAB voted to recommend denial. The Planning Commission voted to recommend approval, and also because protests have been received against the application. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated that they intend to demolish the duplex and garage on the site in order to build a parking lot with approximately 20 stalls, and that parking would service their, the property that they own immediately to the east and adjacent to the site. So the site is generally located to the north and west of May Avenue and Seneca Street. It's just over .21 acres in size and is owned B Multi-Family. It's currently developed, as you heard, with a duplex and a garage. In terms of context, you can see that the properties to the north, well, it's zoned B Multi-Family and developed with a single-family dwelling. Property in southeast is owned by the applicant, zoned LC and developed with a neighborhood market. Property to the northeast is zoned LC Limited Commercial and developed with neighborhood retail. Property to the south is subject site, zoned LC and GO Office. West of the subject site are properties zoned TF3, two-family residential, and also developed with single-family residences. And here's the zoning map, so you can see that. In terms of review, on August 10th, the Planning Commission held the public hearing and recommended approval of the application unanimously, 11-0, per the, and that recommendation was per staff comments. There's one member of the public who spoke in opposition at the MAPC meeting. On August 7th, the District Advisory Board reviewed the request and recommended denial. One member of the public spoke in opposition of the application at that meeting. Valid protest petitions have been received for the requested zone change. They total 29.3% of the total real, of the protest area, and therefore, a supermajority will be necessary to approve any zone change. In terms of council action, it's recommended the city council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and approve the requested zone change. Place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on the second reading. This would require, again, six of seven votes, because of the valid protest petition. Alternatives include the following. You can deny the zone change. That would require five of seven votes, because it would be an override of the Planning Commission, and as always, you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration with a simple majority or four of seven votes. So with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics. So again, here's the aerial, showing the duplexes south and the garage structure to the north. Here's the zoning map. Here's the map from the comprehensive plan, showing it's recommended for commercial use. This is the site plan that was submitted as part of the application. Here's the protest map. And here are photos from the area. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Questions for staff. Councilmember Blue Bob.
Thank you, Mayor. Scott, thanks for coming to my DAB last night. You heard the same thing I did. There's some kind of neighbor feud here going on with the property owners. And then the neighbor showed up to the DAB and the property owner didn't. And I am open for your suggestions on some kind of time limit to try to let them get together. I don't know where to put the action or anything else. I don't, you know, he wants to put a grocery store in there. He wants, he needs the parking. The neighbor is landlocked and can't get to his building without trespassing across his. So I'd like to kind of pin it back to him and his neighbor to try to work something out. So I am open for your suggestions.
Yes, sir. If I could, what I'll do is I'll point out to the rest of the members of the council that this is a challenging case because of the layout of the properties. If you'll notice, the property in red, which is the subject site in the application area, look immediately to the east, and you see the long property that occupies nearly the entire length, north to south, of that property. And the issue that's happening is that that business owner, that property owner, is not able to access the rear of their property, except currently, they're doing it through the application site. So their concern is that should it get developed, that they would be cut off. And there are allegations of other things that are going on between the two in dispute. And that played out certainly at the DAB. And so Councilmember Blue Bob, one recommendation would be if, if they were to come back on October 10, that would provide, hopefully, I believe that that would provide enough opportunity for them to discuss it and come back, give us information about how they'd like to proceed. The alternative option would be for you to send it back to the MAPC. But I think-
Come back to who? Who would they come back to?
Back to here. If you, you've got two options. Well, you've got a number of options. But two of the more prominent ones are you could bring it back to the city council on October 10, and that would give them time to see if they could work out something. And I could report to you whether or not they have worked out something, and then the council could vote on it. Your alternative would be to send it back to the MAPC for them to consider in expedited fashion, and then see if the property owner would show up with a proposed solution.
Okay. And I think, wasn't that MAPC vote, like, split?
It was, that one was actually unanimous. And they took this item. Yeah, it was 11 to 0.
To approve?
To approve it, yes, sir.
Okay, I thought last night you said it was a mixed vote.
Oh, I apologize, sir.
Okay, okay, that's part of the reason. I don't, I don't know if October is enough time.
Okay.
Maybe bring it back in November?
Yes.
I want to run it by my DAB.
Okay. Yeah. So then you would have, you would have the option of the November 7 meeting, November 14 in LC. So there's no meeting then. And November 28 is a consent. So it really looks like November 7 would be your best option.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to bring this item back to us on November 7.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just had a clarifying question. Reading through the notes here, it looked like there was discussion about the parking lot being built, but it could be built now. So is this specifically to the staff comment that said they're looking to extend the building, and that's what it is? Because it looks like they could do a parking lot now, if that's what it was.
Yes. Well, actually, this is a distinction that came up during the debrief with the DAB, or at least quick conversation with the DAB yesterday. Part of the issue is that we, in the Planning Department, we have to send out, we send out staff to cover meetings that haven't actually worked on the staff report. Unfortunately, in this instance, we had a newer staff member who reported that the parking lot could be built by right, which inherently doesn't make sense, because why is there a zoning application if it can be built by right? The distinction on this one is that if the parking lot was to service something on the property, and again, it was residential, so it's B, then it would be allowed. But because the proposed parking lot will be servicing the property to the east and it's commercial, this parking lot would be considered ancillary parking. And so it does require either a zone change or a conditional use to be used that way.
Okay, makes sense.
Thank you. I'll second the motion.
Motion has been made and then seconded. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast their vote. We'll ask that those who are with us remotely to vote by roll call. Councilmember Ballard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoheisel?
Aye.
Having received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
All right, let's start with the appointments. I will be appointing Janita Ridge to the Cedric County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Is there any other appointments at this time that we can get out of the way? See none. Now that is my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded. Clerk will open the roll. Members cast their vote. This is for the one appointment. Councilmember Ballard?
Yay.
Vice Mayor Hoheisel?
Yay.
Having received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Back to comments. All right.
I have a comment.
Okay. Councilmember Ballard?
I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues for having a healthy discussion today about the hydration stations and the bathrooms. Sometimes I don't think we have enough discussion in public. So even though it was really long and lengthy, I just wanted to say thank you. And the public appreciates when we do that. So I just wanted to say thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Scott stepped out, but just want to highlight how awesome Philip was last night at DAB, coming to go over a zoning overview. Philip is always very insightful and thoughtful, gives wonderful presentations. The district advisory board appreciated it. And although he was in high demand last night, we kept him a little later with a very healthy discussion about Wichita libraries. But just wanted to shout out Philip and the good work that he does for the city.
All right. Further discussion. I do have one item I would like to discuss. I would like to make a motion to put on next week's agenda a discussion of possible action about EMT positions